It is Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. And right before we get started with our formal business, we are going to do something we do recurrently every time we have a new version of this body. And so we're going to take a quick portrait of the group. So everybody, come on down. Let's smile for the camera.
Patrick, are you in the same spot?
Come on, come on. Pull in, pull in. East, west, and sweep. Mix it up a little. See, my tie straight.
We need some man on our side.
Oh, do we?
Davenport, what's your gonna do?
All right, we balance that, I think too. I think we're balanced.
All right, so somebody switch to the other side, somebody move over. Five, five.
Mike Oates stands here, Patrick stands here. How about, does this look balanced?
All right.
Wait, I'm closing.
I'm trying to hold mine.
Okay. All right, look here. Okay.
All right. Thank you, everybody. All here for the glory.
Never after.
Just a business note, if we have not concluded business by 8:15 PM, we'll contemplate a 15-minute break at that point. And as always, we'll go ahead and begin with a roll call from the clerk.
Davenport?
Here.
Link?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Wright?
Present.
Fisher?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Culpepper?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Thornton?
Here.
Candy?
Here.
We have a floor.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we will begin with our civility pledge, as we always do, that indicates that the way we govern ourselves is often as important as the positions we take, that our collective decisions will be better when differing views have the opportunity to be fully vetted and considered, that all people have the right to be treated with respect, courtesy, and openness. We value all input and commit to conduct ourselves at all times with civility and courtesy to each other. So first formal order of business is approval of the minutes of meetings of Tuesday, January 7th, and non-voting meetings of Tuesday, January 14th, Thursday, January 23rd, and Friday, January 24th. Do I hear a motion for approval of those minutes?
Some of.
All right, I've got a commission... motion from Commissioner Thornton, and I've got a second from Commissioner Taylor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications tonight?
There are none.
All right, thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that. All right, we have several opportunities for public input, just to give you a layout of the evening. Public input opportunities will be the same. In each of those opportunities, there will be an opportunity on the consent agenda, there will be an opportunity on each of the planning zoning items, an opportunity on old and new business, and because this is a voting meeting, the first Tuesday of the month, there will be an opportunity at the conclusion of the evening to discuss any item not on tonight's agenda. In each of those occasions, speakers will have a three-minute opportunity at the podium. Please fill out one of the cards that's up there and hand that to the attorney who is in the ginger, right in front of the podium, and he will take that from you. Your three-minute opportunity will begin with the indication of the green light in front of the clerk. It will turn yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and then that light will turn red when your three minutes has concluded. And I will thank you for your time with us tonight. I do want to ask, is there any commissioner who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda and move it to discussion?
Number four, please.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Any others?
Number 19.
Just, these are just one through six, anything that's currently on consent. All right, so now is that time when members of the public may speak to the consent agenda items, which are one, two, three, five, and six. So would any member of the public like to speak to one, two, three, five, or six? All right, hearing none, I do believe we have two ordinances as part of this array. Attorney Drake, could you read those ordinances for us, please?
Ordinance for Agenda Item Number One, an ordinance to amend the FY 2025 Annual Operating in Capital Budget for Athens-Clark County so as to provide funding from Airport Enterprise Fund unrestricted net position for Airport Taxiway A reconstruction and Taxiway A3 re-enrollment project design and bidding services and for other purposes. Ordinance for Agenda Item Number Two, an ordinance to amend the FY 2025 Annual Operating in Capital Budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to accept donated funds for use by the Police Department from the Athens Police Foundation originating from the Quick Trip Corporation for expenses to support the Real-Time Crime Center and for other purposes.
All right, thank you, Attorney Drake. All right, do I hear a motion for approval of those five items?
Some moved.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Myers. Is there a second? All right, I've got a second from Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, we are now going to move to public hearing and deliberation on recommendations from the Athens-Clark County Planning Commission. Again, I've described the public input opportunity. First item is number seven regarding 12 Adia County Street and 300 Ann Street. So would any member of the public like to speak to item number seven? And again, just give us your name, place of residence, and then your three minutes will begin.
Brett Nave, Studio BNA Architects and 200 Plum Nellie. And I'm architect on this project, and we took a fair amount of... How's that? Better?
Get closer.
Any better?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I'm the architect on this project, and we took a fair amount of everyone's time on the agenda setting. So I just want to let you know I'm here if anyone has any questions or need any elaborations. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nave. Would anyone else like to speak to item number seven? Good evening.
Hi, Frank Pittman, I live at 1400 Saxon Road in Watkinsville. I'm the land planner on this project, and I wanted to mention something. I wasn't able to be here for the agenda setting, but I wanted to mention one thing. We, our neighbor behind this project, Mr. Chris Vogely on Ann Street, has been very supportive, and we have agreed to try to work with Public Works, assuming this project got approved, to work with Public Works to try to yellow curb along in front of his property, since we're adding Simone Street parking, so we don't double up parking out there and him have a problem. But I wanted to make that on the public record. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to item number seven? Item number seven on Adia County Street and Ann Street. Good evening.
Jane Irwin, 165 Brookstone Drive. I wanted to speak in favor of the project. I'm representing Chris Vogely, who owns those properties on the other side of Ann Street. And with that yellow curbing, Chris says it will be a good project, glad to see it. But of course, the yellow curbing is in the interest of safety on that street, since it is so narrow. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Irwin. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to item number seven? Again, that is the Adia County Street and Ann Street project. Evening.
Hello, Suzanne Warrenfeltz, 175 Dunwoody Drive, and I'm a clean energy advocate. And I noticed that number seven, as well as number eight, includes some clean energy provisions that facilitate electrification. They will include Level 1 EV chargers and outlets, outdoor outlets for e-bike charging that could be used for e-bike charging. And, you know, Athens has a clean and renewable energy plan that we all signed that could use, in my opinion, a little jump start to get going. And we don't, we need that now, you know, more than ever. So these little steps are all steps in the right direction, and I wholly support these little additions to these projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warrenfeltz. Would anyone else like to speak to item number seven? Again, that's the Adia County Street and Ann Street project. Seeing none, we'll move to commission action. And this item would require two motions and decisions, the first on the future land use and the second on the rezoning. Is there a commissioner who would like to make a motion regarding the future land use?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the future land use.
All right, got a motion from Commissioner Myers. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, and I have a second from Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Myers, go ahead and speak to the motion, if you would.
Yeah, I'm just gonna go ahead and speak to this and the rezoning at the same time, if that's okay, so we can move forward with that. I'm supportive of this project. It's a project on a very small acreage of land, it's just a little over two acres, that is vacant residential, commercial, and now it's gonna be changed to mixed use, what was it? Anyway, it's basically business and mixed use family, and with two commercial buildings in the front and 13 residential units, six duplexes and one quadruplex or something in there as well. And this makes sense for this area. I appreciate the developer working with us too, to make sure that, or with me, to make sure that there is a place for people who are renting to have EV, this is with the rezoning, but to have an EV charging place on the property. And so I'm really happy about this as well. I do want to address the yellow curbing while I'm here, because I was glad to hear that from the developer working with them, and I've also talked to the neighbor right there as well about how to proceed with that and the process to go through. So when you all get to do the, you know, breaking ground, and I talked to him today, and I talked to the clerk, we then move forward to get transportation and to move forward on that yellow curbing. So I think that looks like it's all set from all the players involved. But I think this is a really good project. It's a little, it's just what we talk about in filled housing in a very dense place for those who want to use a alternative transportation. There are buses, this is really close to the Firefly and the Greenway, so it's perfectly set up. I have to thank Commissioner Wright also for bringing some attention to the back stairways to Ann Street, where we looked into the fact that, you know, could you put a ramp here to make it easier? But because of the depth from the back of this property up to Ann Street, I think it was something like, the ramp would need to be 220 feet and have seven landings. So they are gonna make a little platforms, a ramp kind of thing here that would make it easier for people who are having scooters or bikes, maybe even carriages, I don't know, to get down in the back that way. So I'm really happy to support this, and this is in support of the CDO that I submitted for the rezoning as well.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Wright, any follow-up remarks?
I think Commissioner Myers summed it up well. Thank you.
Is there any other commissioners who'd like to make observations or ask questions about this project?
Me.
Commissioner Taylor.
I just, I want this to be on record, that I will not be supporting any of the developments tonight that comes before us. That is not going to be for the working-class citizens of Athens-Clark County, and so I want that to be a part of the record.
Thank you. Just speaking to it gives it status as part of the record.
I'm so grateful.
All right, any other remarks regarding this item? We have a motion for the commission to find option from Commissioner Myers and a second from Commissioner Wright, and this first vote would regard the future land use. We need an ordinance read from the attorney, so we're gonna do that at this point.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, with respect to amending the future land use map of Athens-Clark County by changing the designation of one acre of land located at 12 Adia County Street from Main Street Business to Main Street Business and mixed density residential and for other purposes.
Thank you, Attorney Drake. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right, thank you.
Or aye.
All right, the next vote regards the rezoning. Would somebody like to make a motion regarding the rezoning?
I'll move.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Myers. Is there a second?
Second.
I've got a second from Commissioner Thornton. All right, any further remarks?
No, just to make sure it's the CDO rezoning there.
All right, so a motion for the CDO. Remarks from any other member of the body? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And we'll read the ordinance, I apologize.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, with respect to rezoning, two parcels of land comprising approximately 2.03 acres located at 12 Adia County Street and 300 Ann Street from GC Commercial General and RM1 Mixed Density Residential to CG Commercial General Plan Development, RM-2 Mixed Density Residential Plan Development and for other purposes.
Now that you've heard those details, we'll just affirm that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, all right, you've got that, Madam Clerk. All right, motion carries nine to one. All right, we're gonna move on to item eight. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to item eight, which is 218 North Avenue?
Brett Nave, 200 Plum Nellie, Studio BNA Architects. Again, same, thank you for all your time at the agenda setting, and I'm here if you have any questions or need any elaborations on it. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Nave. Evening.
Hi, everyone. My name is Chase Lawrence, I live at 100 Cloverhurst Circle here in Athens, and I'll be the owner and developer of this neighborhood. And I think we had some really good discussion at the agenda setting, and I want to let you know that I'm available this evening, as always, for questions. But I wanted to come and publicly say thank you to each of the commissioners that reached out to me to work on this. As a small business owner here in Athens, the landscape has changed a lot, and it's become very tough to get new proposals through, and I just really felt supported in this effort. We brought a lot of stakeholders to the table and gave them a voice in this, and I've made a lot of new relationships during that process. And specifically, thank you to Commissioners Link and to Commissioner Thornton, whose district is adjacent to this, because you all made this process really pragmatic. And Commissioner Thornton, you even made it fun. I haven't had a fun rezon in a long time, so thank you to you. And if you can't, if you can't support this tonight, I want to say that I understand your position, I respect your position, and I hope that in the future I can win your trust and we can work together on something else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Is there anyone else here to speak to this project on North Avenue? Item number eight.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Elaine Brown, and I'm a resident at 216. It's a small community of RV individuals. However, Mr. Bob Dolenhoff have the right to push you to this project, but the 12 members that are there, at least three of the people that are there are not gonna be in a position to relocate safely or to remove their RV. You have military individuals or retired military with disabilities that are over there, and we're just hoping that you guys in all this planning make allowances for the retired military and disabled military that are there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to item number eight, before we move to commission discussion?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I intended not to speak here tonight, but was encouraged to relay some thoughts and also to follow one of our tenants as well. I represent the fourth generation out of five that have lived there in this property, and for many years, we've had this, in the early days, it was a farm, and then about 65 years ago, it was, my mother had set up the Mobile Home Park, Athens Mobile Home Court was the name. About 30 years ago, there was an allowance to take some campers. And then subsequent to that, this commission, or whoever was necessary to vote, that the campers were not allowed to be full-time residents in Athens-Clark County. However, because of the arrangement I spoke of, it was grandfathered in. And so now, we have 12 spots, and they're all campers. And we are, and they've been here, eight out of the 12 have actually been here five years or longer, and one of them 19 years. But that's just a little bit of a background of who we have there. It is a stable, close, friendly community, and we have the variety of residents that were spoken of. Our tenants want to stay. We recognize that, I do. But it is time for our family to move on and to sell the property, which is in progress. And that's where the rezoning is coming up now. We know that the proposed developer, the architect, the builder are all very well-known and have an outstanding reputation here, and so the project that you are familiar with is, represents a very good improvement to the area and the subsequent whole corridor for North Avenue. And I'm sure that everybody will be proud. I am working with the residents to try to find places, and have actually, out of the 12, six of them have already found other locations, and we're ongoing to try to find it for the same, for everyone there. So just to let you know that I'm very much involved, care about them, and we're working on that. I'll be here to take questions or answer any other specifics that you might like later.
Thank you, sir. Let me just get your name for the record.
Bob Dolenhoff.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak to item number eight, which is the North Avenue project? All right, this is in Commission District Two, so I'm gonna turn to Commissioner Link to make a motion.
Yeah, we've got a couple CDOs here, and I moved to approve both the CDOs, I just want to let the public know. I've come up with some language, worked with the architect, to assure that the architectural renderings that are shown in the packet carry forward into the final project. You know, this is not, it's not a, the site plan is not set in stone, because the topography of the lot is interesting, to say the least. There are a lot of challenges, so, you know, things might change as the engineering moves forward. I've also put in some provisions to accommodate electric vehicle chargers, both automobiles as well as personal EVs with outdoor outlets on some of the porches. And I had some conversation with planning. Bruce and I sat down and talked about the situation of the existing residents and the RVs, and the fact that there is no legal place in Athens-Clark County for them to go. And I reached out to the mayor and made a formal request that, you know, we charge planning staff with coming up with some language to allow RVs in some of our residential zones by right, that, you know, would allow folks like these retired military veterans a place to go, you know, certainly put out some parameters as far as lot size and where, and location of these things. So that's kind of separate from this project, but I feel like this is an ideal opportunity to move forward with diversifying our housing choices and enabling some of this affordable housing option. It's a very common and increasingly popular type of housing in this day and age, and I feel like we need to accommodate it. So I look forward to seeing that conversation move forward. I also shared the contact info for a developer who's reached out to me a couple of times who would like to develop an RV park in Athens. So I hope that as we move forward with our future land use plan, you know, we can tweak that to allow more of these kind of small RV-style residential parks, not just the kinds that come and go on game day weekends. So with that said, I would like to make a motion that we approve both CDOs, the one which applies to the design as well as EV charger specifics, and Commissioner Thornton's language regarding charging planning staff with coming up with some text amendment language with regards to RVs.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor, and there's a second from Commissioner Thornton. Commissioner Thornton, any remarks to follow up?
Yes, I really think that it would be so wrong to go with a future land use plan and build some wonderful, wonderful townhouses and homes and have eight or 12 people homeless. My CDO was specifically giving staff with the help of Attorney Drake and Director, what's your name again? Bruce Alani. I do have these senior moments, y'all, so, excuse me. But to really do something different, we have, I think it's 90, 60 days? 60 days, I believe, to bring us back some ideas on some changes we could look at with zoning. And if that is possible, we may need to look at a special use permit. Other, and also the fact that Mr. Lawrence and his team are not gonna rush with this development with the support of Mr. Bob, these residents probably could, I believe in miracles. We're looking at six to eight months down the road. If we do not pass this tonight with that particular CDO for the residents, Mr. Bob could take it off the market, put it on the market for anybody else, and anybody else could buy it and only give those residents 30 days. So we're looking to work while the clock is ticking for the residents, but also for the reputation of this government. We cannot say that we care about homeless folk and make people homeless. So I'm excited, got some new buddies to work with, and I'm sure we're gonna be doing a lot of other great things down the road. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any other commissioner who'd like to speak to the motion? All right, just appreciate Commissioner Link and Commissioner Thornton looking at multiple aspects of this, and so should this pass tonight, what I'll do, just in my agenda-setting role, is I'll bring forward to a committee of the whole, an opportunity to work session to talk about these potential code changes in the broader context of accessory dwelling units, which, of course, we talked about a couple of years ago, and in some ways got conjoined with the conversation about short-term rentals, and we've largely dealt with short-term rentals. And now I think it's a good time to have that conversation, particularly given that we're looking at a multitude of opportunities for land use in the months ahead. So.
Clarification, clarification. The CDO is not attached to what you just said, right?
It would just rest alongside it. And so that would be something that we would be doing anyhow.
Okay, but we're okay with staff moving ahead, trying to get back with us?
That's right.
Okay, all right.
All in favor, please say aye. Oh, we need an ordinance, I apologize. Let's get the ordinance read.
Ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, with respect to rezoning one parcel of land comprising approximately 4.5 acres located at 218 North Avenue from CN Commercial Neighborhood to RM3 Mixed Density Residential and for other purposes.
All right, got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, one opposed? All right, motion carries nine to one. All right, we're gonna move on to item number All right, we're going to move on to item number nine. Number nine regards 1691 Milletge Avenue Extension. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to item number nine? And again, just give us your name and place of residence.
Good evening, my name is Brad Martin. I'm 240 Fortson Drive. I'm the owner of this property. I've been talking with planning, or not planning, but public utilities, and we got this serious issue taken care of, and we're happy with it to move forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you, appreciate it, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item? Number nine.
Hello, Dylan Woolsey, 505 Ruben Parkway. I just want to speak in favor of items nine and 10 for the same reason. These are increasing the housing density from RM1 to RM2, so it'll help our housing stock to, increasing our housing stock will, you know, decrease our rent burden marginally as well as decrease pressure on increasing homelessness. That's another reason to support it. As well, these both are very close to transit, I think roughly less than 10-minute walk for each of these. And they are both in District 10, so this is an area that is a lot less at risk of gentrification than other, where other developments are being done in Athens, especially in underserved more marginalized communities. So all these factors combined, I think that these should be supported and approved. And I just hope in the future, items that are, rezoning that are aligned like this, having very close to transit, increasing density, and in areas that are less at risk for gentrification, should be easily fast-tracked and approved, and I hope that continues to go forward in this body. Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to item number nine? Milletge Extension. All right, seeing none, we'll come to commission action. Commissioner Hamby, would you like to place a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby and a second from Commissioner Thornton. Any remarks, Commissioner Hamby?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Thornton? Any other speaking to the motion from members of the body? All right, we've got an ordinance.
To amend the Code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to rezoning one parcel of land comprising approximately 0.38 acres of land located at 1691 Milletge Avenue Extension from RM-1 Mixed Density Residential to RM-2 Mixed Density Residential and for other purposes.
All right, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, motion carries nine to one. All right, we're going to move on to item number 10, and this regards 997 South Milletge Avenue, very close to the last one. Would anyone like to speak to 997 South Milletge? Good evening.
Good evening, Vincent Bricka, 257 Carrington Drive. I'm the architect on the project. Thank you for the agenda setting. We had some good positive feedback, and we had the opportunity to speak also, Mr. Hamby and I, this week about this, and thank you for the positive feedback. I'm available if y'all have any questions about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bricka. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Item number 10.
Motion to approve, Mayor.
All right, got a motion to approve from Commissioner Hamby. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby and a second from Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Hamby, any remarks regarding this one?
Yes, sir.
Any remarks?
Ready to vote.
All right. Any input from other members of the body? We've got an ordinance on this as well, of course.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to rezoning a parcel of land comprising approximately 0.86 acres located at 997 South Milletge Avenue from CO Commercial Office to RM-2 Mixed Density Residential and for other purposes.
Thank you, Attorney Drake, I appreciate that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries nine to one. All right, item 11 is a text amendment, which modifies our process for approval of halfway houses to make it parallel with all other special uses rather than the prior version, which would require two hearings in this place several months apart. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby and a second from Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Hamby, any remarks?
Nope.
Commissioner Taylor.
Well, I won't be voting for houses that our residents cannot afford. I will wholeheartedly support text amendments that make sure our residents that are living in long-term recovery has a roof over their head, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Davenport?
I should have sent the email out, I'm sorry. I just got a question, like, do we have to call them halfway houses? Can we change it? Is it to recovery homes?
There is another technical name they're using now. I just don't know what it is. I could get back and shoot you an email, but there is another name they're using statewide.
Recovery homes?
It's not recovery, it's not recovery.
Just as a matter of protocol, of course, because we have that code section in front of us, we can modify other elements of that code section. If you would like to strike the term halfway house and replace it with the term recovery home, that's something that can be done at this time.
I'll move substantive motion to approve with that change.
I think there's some leak in there.
I was looking to see what the state law says, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to create a lot of confusion.
Yeah, certainly if there's some OCGA that we need to correspond with, we could do that.
It uses the term halfway house.
So given that that's a term embedded in state code, my recommendation would be to just stick with that, and we can obviously personally use other language. All right, everybody okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
All right, all right, I think we need an ordinance read, and then we can take a vote.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens Clark County, Georgia, with respect to zoning and development standards for halfway houses and for other purposes.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 10 to zero. All right, next segment of the evening will be public input on old and new business. And so those will be items four and 12 through 19. Item four and 12 through 19, and terms of public input are the same as we discussed earlier, that three-minute opportunity governed by the light in front of the clerk. So at this point, if anyone would like to speak to any older new business item, line up and we'll have that opportunity for you. You can line up behind Mr. Sheets if you have some interest in speaking. Good evening.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, and esteemed ones. It is I once again, Alvin Sheets, address P.O. Box 5142, Athens, Georgia, 30604. I'm here to speak on, I think it's item 15, Doing Business for Black Businesses. Ephesians Chapter 6, verse 12 says, "For we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against the rulers of darkness and of this world, against spiritual wickedness in high places." While I am in support of the tabling of the resolution for a small period of time, 60 days, I believe it is, I have a little reservation because my past experiences as a commissioner oftentimes to delay was to deny. Now, I'm praying and counting on all these supporters of this resolution tonight to keep you all conscious, stirred, to do the right thing. By tabling this thing for 60 days, but doing the right thing, not letting the delay be in order to deny. As I said, in my past experience as a commissioner, did this thing for eight years, y'all, for those don't know. And to delay was denied, so my concern is that this delay could be used to deny, and I pray that's not so. So I ask that you do the right thing, continue to walk in the path of righteousness as you govern this fine city in this area of northeast Georgia, because it does affect northeast Georgia now, it's not just Athens. With that being said, peace be with you, I'll leave my time for somebody else. Y'all take care.
Thank you, Mr. Sheets. Good evening.
Good evening, Joan Roden. People of color referenced in the resolution, your so-called lover is cheating on you and you can't even see it. You vote for these people again and again in hopes that this time your promises will mean something. The elected lover says, "I love you, and I didn't mean to throw away the money. Please forgive me, I promise I'll never do it again. Please take me back, I'll do better." You know the drill. Yet the people who really care about these issues are forced to stand by and watch the abuse and the betrayal while the lovers bring bouquets of gorgeous flowers and mushy Hallmark cards to entice the scorned and humiliated. Don't you see what they are doing to you? These elected officials should be ashamed of themselves for prompting this six-page virtue signaling resolution apology. Frankly, it's nauseating and unbecoming a public servant. Do you really think the public, the community, believes this resolution? It is dishonest, and some of you know it, and you've said so. But you will vote yes because to vote no is just a little too much honesty. You're afraid you might look bad to the public. Look bad? Do you remember the old Jerry Springer program back in the day? It was a clickbait at its finest. Often, there would be a couple on the stage, and they would bring out whistleblower to inform the wife or the husband that the spouse was cheating and having an affair with another. It was betrayal and humiliation displayed before the world. But here's the thing, it's better to be quiet and let the betrayal, is it better to be quiet and let the betrayal continue right under the nose of the betrayed spouse? Or should someone speak up? Is the truth important and to whom? Tonight, I'm fed up with watching the underserved people of color falling for the virtue signaling represented in this resolution. I've been observing this elected body under many iterations. I've observed your alibi groups that are called at your dog whistle, who come to the rescue to cover you. They promise the public that you are the for-real savior. They passionately state how much they support the underserved communities, yet Bethel Homes sits unfinished while bike paths and public art and middle-class housing is put first by this very body. You never state what true affordable housing costs because you never plan on tolerating the people of color who would live in those houses or apartments. This resolution is nothing more than a carrot held in front of the donkey that doesn't know any better. That carrot is scam. Keep that carrot out front and keep all those struggling people waiting for just one bite out of that carrot. If you vote to approve this resolution, the carrot. You are a part of the problem and not a part of the solution. I pity those who are married to your empty virtue signals.
Thank you, Ms. Roden. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. My name is Suzy Weller, and I am an Athens resident, 170 Paul Street. In regard to number 13, under Old Business, I am someone who walks and bikes on a daily basis, and I affirm the Vincent Drive pedestrian improvements proposed project. In regard to number 15, under Old Business, thank you for all the resolutions you have passed for our Athens community, especially the resolutions supporting the LGBTQIA+ community, of which I am a part of. Support of Athens immigrants, undocumented Latinx community, Black Lives Matter, Lenin Town, and so many other wonderful resolutions. This is another reason why I'm proud to call Athens home. Lenin Town and Black Lives Matter resolutions committed extended, intense efforts to address systemic racism and demonstrate the importance of black lives in Athens. Let's put those resolutions into actions. I ask that you pass the proposed resolution for building a path to equity in Athens for black indigenous and people of color, focusing on housing security, economic empowerment for black and minority-owned businesses, youth safety and development with oversight and community collaboration. Other communities around our nation are following through and putting actions behind their words. We should too. Help protect civil and human rights. In regards to Stan Coleman, I request that the installation of adequate lighting in Walker Park, as well as renaming the trail in honor of Stan Coleman. I side with Love and the Athens Anti-Discrimination Movement. Finally, in regard to number 17, under New Business, I worked for 16 years of my career reporting to and being funded under the Victims of Crime Act grant, and I support any way for that funding to be sustained, increased, available to victims such as foster children, survivors of sexual abuse, and violent crimes in our area. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Suzy. Good evening.
Good evening, Dylan Woolsey, 505 Ruben Parkway. I'm going to speak in support for items 14 and 15. For 14, briefly, libraries are a essential public service that this government provides, and being able to move more progress on the east side library will continue those public services. So being able to provide legal and financial support behind this library would be a great move forward. For item 15, we have seen over the past month that the federal government and the state government is not prioritizing black minorities. They have done numerous things, such as, I think it was the Department of Defense, they're no longer recognizing Black History Month, they're removing consideration for HUD grants that will disproportionately negatively affect heavily minority cities such as Athens. So because the state government and the federal government are not in the position to care, they are not going to be prioritizing black minorities and other minorities in Athens and the state of Georgia. It's up to us as a government to actually do these things. So I please hope you support this resolution to address equity among all minorities, including the black minority residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Sarah Garing. I live at 140 Griffith Avenue. I'm here as a member of the Athens Urbanists and also the Athens Democrats. I'm here to speak to item 15. We're living in a time where the federal government and institutions across the country are trying to tell us all that women are inferior, that LGBT people are inferior, and most relevantly to today's agenda, that black people and all racial minorities are inferior. And mainstream media is supporting this by going along with their euphemistic language about DEI. They're saying that we can't talk anymore about the fact that while we are created equal, we are born into inequality in this country. The people of Athens say no, we will not go back. We need you, our representatives, to show that to the world. No matter what the rest of the country tries to do, Athens is moving forwards towards equality for BIPOC communities. I support the specifics of this resolution, I appreciate how specific it is. In my particular area of interest in housing security, I support all four stub items under that. I think it's incredibly important that we prioritize the development of affordable, subsidized affordable housing, that we continue efforts to attain rental assistance funding, that we develop and equitably apply zoning and housing policies to prevent displacement and gentrification, and to seek to ensure that residents can stay in their communities. And that we continue to fund, prioritize funding, the development of this new housing that is subsidized, that is affordable. We will continue to see for-profit, market-rate housing built in Athens, and we need to continue to support that with subsidized housing as well, because as we know, new market rentals are not affordable for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Benny Coleman, and I'm here tonight listening to Tiffany. And I'm a supporter of what she said about not supporting any workforce, new homes be built. We need to deal with the people that have been living here all their lives who don't have anywhere to stay. If anything should be built, we must consider them because they are left out of the equation that the city council and other people here that come to here to agree on. But if you've been living here all your lives and you're not able to afford to stay in your home, what else you got to look for? When you bring in people from out of state and the people here to take your property anytime they want, as long as they flash money, it doesn't make any sense. In order to stop everything going on, what I call the madness, we need to stop all new developments right now, adult new people coming in, and deal with the people that have been living here all their lives. And when you say workforce, you've got mothers who've got kids. If you get a divorce from your wife, the judge will say, "She's working, and she's got kids in the home." That's a job, so you must consider that. And you also must consider people who are on retirement, social security, disability. That is a job, but the term workforce, it's kind of shady when you bring that into the equation. And I plead to you, and especially my friend up here, the attorney, please look one more time on the grand fall of law, very carefully, because I was taught, 69-years-old, that grand fall of law, once it is given, especially to a black family, it cannot be changed. And when someone buys that property, the same condition rolls on. That's what I think. Now, I'm no expert like him. That's why I asked him one more time, please, for my sake, get the definition and let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Good evening.
Good evening, Todd Lovett, P.O. Box 18826. Regarding the policy proposal titled Resolution to Address Black Minority Communities, which is on this February 4th agenda, the policy proposal has been presented multiple times and has not garnered sufficient support from the American freedom community. The proposal appears to have been authored in bad faith. As the author used the AFBI ordinance and sought support As the author used the AFBI ordinance and sought support from AADM while keeping the language intentionally vague to allow further exploitation by individuals who do not qualify as part of the impacted communities, in short, specificity is necessary. The AFBI ordinance was created with sole purpose of addressing historical disparities affecting specific impacted groups. As someone who has engaged with many people in the community, I can attest that only a select few were made aware of this proposal listed on item fifteen. And the public speaker who in prior meetings claimed to represent the community did not do so honestly. Proposals like this are damaging to American freedmen, as they open doors for unimpacted individuals to divert much-needed focus and resources, and also further exploitive actions and maturation of historical and current undermining. The policy is no different from DEI initiatives, which have often led to further disenfranchisement and discrimination against American freedmen. While DEI initiatives aim to address historical inequities and promote representation, the benefits have not evenly been distributed. Data and studies suggest that Asian-Americans, white women, and immigrant communities have primarily benefited from DEI and affirmative action policies, rather than the historically marginalized groups these programs were initially designed to support. Despite being a primary group targeted by historical civil rights legislation, American freedmen have seen limited benefits from DEI and affirmative action policies. There are persistent gaps in wealth, education, employment outcomes for this group. For example, white women in groups inclusive under the terms minority and BIPOC have made significant gains in corporate leadership roles in academia, often at the expense of Black Americans, particularly American freedmen. It is important to note that the legal term "American freedman" is race-neutral and completely identifies a historically harmed group. It is crucial to address these issues and ensure that policies genuinely benefit the communities they are intended to support. As a supporter of a stronger and greater Athens, I must also make note on public record in this very room in the City Hall of Athens that I know I am amongst some swindlers taking advantage of harmed communities. And those of you who are playing coy to the mountains of evidence in identifying them are also complicit while perpetrating a lie that you truly care about harmed Athens residents. They will soon too be aware. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lovett. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Moka Jasmine Johnson, resident of PO Box 496, Athens, Clark County. I'm the co-founder of the Athens Anti-Discrimination Movement. Since 2016, we have dedicated to advancing racial and social justice. Our efforts along the voices of this community have led critical initiatives like the anti-discrimination bar ordinance, the no cash bail ordinance, the Police Civilian Oversight Board, the People of Belonging Office, and the Human Relations Commission. Each of these measures was a step forward towards accountability, equity, and creating a more inclusive Athens-Clark County. Tonight, I stand before you as a voice of over 483 signatures on change.org. So there were people in this community that were well aware of this resolution, who signed the AADM petition in support of this resolution. This is not just a document. It is a call for the people urging our local government taking meaningful steps towards racial equity. It demands action on housing security, youth safety, and economic opportunities for Black and minority-owned businesses. We are not here for empty promises or symbolic gestures. We are here for action. Leadership is not about saying, it's about doing. And this resolution is a step forward towards real accountability. It is a declaration that our government values fairness, opportunity, and justice for all. To those in power, you do not have to delay this resolution. You have the authority to move forward. If you have spoken in favor of racial equity before, you have told this community that you stand with them, then I challenge you to stand firm in your word. Whether through an ordinance or a resolution, the responsibility remains the same. It is up to you. The people entrusted you with their votes and their voices, and now it's time to act. Voting for this resolution does not limit you, it empowers you. It is a beginning, not an end. And while this resolution is a formal expression of intent, we also urge you to continue this work and to take a step further. So tonight, I do ask that you do not turn back, do not delay, stand with the people, vote for this resolution, and let's move forward together. I did not come here to divide this community. We sent this resolution out. I've spoken to multiple people sitting here. We've made phone calls. And again, over 400 people, 483 people, signed this petition in support of this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Good evening.
Good afternoon. My name is Hampton Bearnow. I live at 255 to Preserve Drive, and I'd like to speak in support of number fourteen and fifteen. Speaking of number fourteen real quickly, as somebody who does a lot of volunteering, particularly around libraries here at Athens, I've seen the ways in which these libraries and all the resources that we give, give so much back to the community, and particularly towards those who are within the working class and/or unhoused. Speaking from some personal experience, I do volunteering where I often give out food at libraries here in Athens, and these libraries are not only a place where those who are disadvantaged have the opportunity to obtain so much more, but serve as a community center that is more and more under threat as the consensus around libraries becomes less and less important, unfortunately. And speaking to number fifteen, I think it's very clear that the next front of civil rights has been economic inequality. The great Jesse Jackson and of course MLK focused much of their lives focusing on economic issues. And this resolution and the details within it show a firm commitment towards fixing that great injustice that was not solved during the 1960s. And of course, we are still struggling and trying to obtain today. Going forwards from there, I would also like to state that I think that the resolution is very sincere, and I would like to once again recognize that the details and the focus of the resolution itself are very well intentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, Hampton. Good evening.
Good evening. I am Courtney Omega Dos. I reside at 150 Pine Crest Lodge Road. I first want to thank God for this opportunity to speak. I want to thank Moka Jasmine Johnson for the invitation. And commissioners, thank you for your ears to hear. Today, I stand before you. I am a mother to two, a wife to one, or one that he knows of. Yeah. And the daughter of two social workers. So I understand social community representation. A former elected official from Miami, Florida, I understand duty to community. And as the proud granddaughter of the first African-American-elected mayor of Daytona Beach, Yvonne Scarlett Golden, and the only female-elected mayor of Daytona Beach, I definitely understand pioneering change. Honorables, today, I'm telling you, I'm not asking, I'm telling you. Housing, as we know it, it absolutely takes advantage of the most vulnerable of our communities. This country, right now, albeit divided, are outraged that people, neighbors, are taken from their homes, are snatched from their communities, are ripped from the schools. But I dare say, many of you, many of us, have watched this happen to our neighbors through evictions. And we've sat silent. We've turned a blind eye because it is not our problem, then we have no solutions for it. I am the co-founder, proud co-founder, of P4R Village Building Initiative, where we practice three principles: Feed the village, teach the village, and protect the village. What are you doing? Not what you're saying, but what are you doing to do that? Because verily, I say to you, of all the things that I've mentioned that I'm proud of and that I feel so accomplished in doing, my most proud or my most vigilant responsibility is to do what is said in Mark 1231, "To love thy neighbor." I yield.
Thank you, Ms. Dos. Good evening.
Yvonne Dos, 150 Pine Crest Lodge Road, Athens, Georgia, District Eight. I had something written down that I was going to say, but after listening, I'm going to scrap that and just talk. Can't teach what you don't know, and you can't lead where you won't go. This is Athens leadership. Y'all failing us. Y'all failing us. Housing is a real issue in this town. We need y'all to step up. No delays, no passing the buck, no letting things die on this floor. We need y'all to stand up. We need every last one of y'all to stand up. If y'all are leadership, then lead. Lead. Do not do what Atlanta is doing and pricing everybody out. This is what's happening right now. Lead us. We put y'all in these seats. Us, we put y'all in these seats. So lead. I yield.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Hello, Christriest. I'm Nei Turner. I live at 150 Pine Crest Lodge Road. The corporation that owns my land, the land that our house lives on, the developers... Yeah, the corporation that owns is trying to rebuild our housing. But I don't want this to happen. I can't let this happen. If we don't have a home, I have to go back to living the hotel life. Hotel life can sound fun, but it isn't when it's where you live for who knows how long. I lived in the hotel system from my ninth grade year. I was struggling with school. I don't have much time to sleep since we have to get up so early in the morning to go to school, which affected my sleep schedule to prepare for tests and learning. I don't want to go back to that lifestyle. I had straight A's last semester. I'm also eligible to have a GPA, sorry, Georgia scholarship. If I go back to the hotel lifestyle, I could lose everything. We all can. And who knows where else could happen? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello, American Mission. My name is Noah Johnson, co-founder of Athens Anti-Discrimination Movement, address 224 Cavalier Road. First off, I'm a little offended by the non-minority person getting up here talking about minorities' relationship with the government, saying that we have a marriage with the government, and it's a dysfunctional marriage. And if it is a marriage, just like any other marriage, I ask you to stay out of our business. And outside of that, when thinking about what to say tonight and speaking to the American Mission, I decided to ask the AI what are the obvious signs that a government is not supporting minority economic well-being? And the results was, one, high poverty, ongoing poverty in minority neighborhoods without special programs to help; two, limited capital access, hardly any loans or grants available for minority folks and businesses; three, neglected infrastructure, poorly maintained neighborhoods, and subpar services and transit options that hurt growth; four, no job training, few and no job training programs designed for minority communities; five, leadership gaps, low representation of minorities in local government and economic roles; six, lack of engagement, minimal outreach to involve minority communities in economic planning. AADM did not come up with the need to do this. There was a research report done in 2023 by MGT Consulting Group that backs these issues, showing these big gaps in access for minority women, minority and women-owned businesses. So to fix these situations, we need more fair practices, more fair policies. We need the government to focus on smart investments and change to support, changes to support its most vulnerable residents in growth that supports everybody. Tonight, we're here to ask you to support this resolution. And you're going to hear people that's in opposition of this resolution, that wants ordinance instead, but I want you to know, we want an ordinance also. But we feel like this is the process that you have to take from our experience working with the government. And we're willing to work with anybody to get that ordinance or get these laws that you guys may feel you want other than this resolution. But tonight, we feel like we need the majority of you guys to admit what this report said and commit to putting something forth to change these issues. And that's pretty much all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Gertz. Commissioners, I am Reverend Mickey Chastain. I am at 105 Lake Over Drive. I'm here to speak in support of item number fifteen. The church I pastor, Oconee Street United Methodist Church, is located just across the river here in East Athens. And so we have front row seat to some of the most pervasive gentrification currently happening in the historically black East Athens neighborhood. Even while Triangle Plaza in East Athens is less than two miles away from UGA Arch, last year, UGA's Community Mapping Lab described East Athens as a food desert, as poorly-funded schools, little public transportation access, poor infrastructure resulting in a high poverty rate. This is where we serve, and it's about a mile from where I'm standing right now. Now, Oconee Street founded the local mission, Our Daily Bread. We have members that serve there at least twice a month. Members of our church support through bail funds and provide bail assistance to folks who are sitting in jail because they can't afford $5 and $10 bail funds. Members also organize a court watch program. They observe regularly proceedings at our courthouse. This past month, in extreme cold weather, we had a number of unhoused individuals join us on Sunday mornings just during our services, looking for a place to come out of the cold, have a cup of coffee, find a little support and community. And amongst these, all of these ministries, the racial disparities are stark. By and large, those who we serve in these missions come from our Black communities in our city. Evidence of the ongoing pervasive Black minority inequities in this town is not hidden. It is very close to us. Last year, Easy Street Capital named Athens the third-best city in Georgia for real estate investors, not residents investors. So they wrote, "The large population of students creates a year-round need for long-term and short-term rental demand." Also in Athens, they wrote, "Investors can take advantage of the city's fast-growing rents." Investors who do not live here are gathering up local housing as an income stream for themselves, and they are targeting historically Black neighborhoods. We all know this. And I'm extremely grateful for the faithful work of AADM, so many to address these disparities, but respectfully, we are calling on you all now to battle. But we know the anger, we know the rage that will come when we tell these folks who are here to make money, no, we're going to put protections in place for our residents. I'm asking you to be willing to face that anger. Battle on behalf of the residents, not just for a few of us, but for all of the residents in this town. Anti-gentrification ordinances, investing in underfunded schools, protecting equitable access for Black business owners and leaders, this resolution is a good first step to that commitment. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Chastain. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Benson. I reside at 235 DeBose Avenue, and I'm representing Athens Anti-Discrimination Movement this evening as a secretary, a board member, and volunteer. I'm asking Mayor and Commissioner to support the resolution for Black and minority inequities. I want to thank all of you. What you do is very important in our community, and I know you love Athens very much. The resolution addresses housing security, economic empowerment, and youth safety. But I'm going to just talk about housing security tonight because I feel like if one has secure housing, that's going to lead to more stable economic situation for someone, along with safety for children. The resolution is asking to find and keep affordable housing, to increase rental assistance funds to prevent homelessness and evictions, and to support equitable zoning policies. And when I looked, dig dug... And when I looked, dig dug deeper about econo, the policies, equitable zoning policies, it addresses things like, uh, multi-use development, um, access to public transportation, uh, more jobs. And that's good for everybody in Athens. Um, I own a home, and I will be forever grateful and blessed, and I count my, my blessings every night. I don't take it for granted that I own a home. And having secure housing leads to more opportunities in life. And we all want to thrive and not just survive. So I want to thank all of you, Mayor and Commission, um, to support the resolution, um, to, um, around inequities for black and minorities. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mickalia Smith, and I reside at one six five Creekwood Drive. And I am the poet laureate of Athens, as well as the senior program coordinator for the Georgia Conflict Center. And I stand here today in support of the proposed resolution by AADM. The last time I was here, I read a poem called "Our City" that spoke to the beauty of our city and its people while also criticizing the way that our people are falling through the cracks of a broken system. James Baldwin said, "I love America more than any other country in the world." And exactly for this reason, I insist on the right to criticize her perpetually. I love the city of Athens, but more than anything, I love this community. To love is to see and to be brave about seeing. To love is to move and to be bold about moving. I urge the Mayor and Commission to see the injustices that occur every day in our city. Twenty-six percent of our residents living below the poverty line, high rates of housing insecurity, black and minority businesses struggling to thrive and secure funding, the increase in youth violence with limited third spaces and recreational activities for them to access. Seeing is just the first step. I said, "Seeing is just the first step." And by not moving, you say that these issues are invisible to you. So I call you to move on behalf of the city that we all love so much. So see and move bravely and boldly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Tamika Money. Um, my address is one one five North Avenue. And I am a researcher, a business consultant by trade, and I want to start with a question. If I plant an apple seed, can I expect an orange tree to sprout? Today, we see widespread disparities, the loss of generational wealth, and the continuous exclusion of certain groups from access to economic opportunities such that it impairs their upward mobility. This is especially true for black and brown people, women, and minority-owned businesses with generations of families living in perpetual poverty. In assessing the economic and social history of Athens, you will find that there are patterns of behavior that are persistent throughout time that have led us here, just as much research across the US has found. We cannot simply sweep under the rug slavery-enforced labor, which was instrumental in constructing and developing Athens, post-slavery economic suppression. Uh, the Klan was active throughout the early nineteen hundreds in business and in the government. Uh, three, racial massacres, town destruction, and governmental sanctioned displacement. Here, that was Lennin Town, and just an hour from here, that was Lake Lanier. Violent, four, violence and suppression of black wealth. This was seen through the intimidation tactics of the Klan, lost homeownership and rights to land, as well as restricted access to loans and predatory loans. Five, economic racism and exploitation, which has impaired black people's access to education and employment opportunities. This represents over three centuries of constant economic assault on black and brown people. The history is undeniable, but more importantly, it's not just the history. It is still happening right now, and perhaps unknowingly, we participate and perpetuate these effects. We see it in the disparity studies, which I've gone through and looked at across the United States, in which here, specifically in Athens, you had about fifty times the amount of money being spent with non-minority male businesses. It's in the poverty rate, right, where, uh, blacks and browns are experiencing poverty at higher rates. It is in the housing insecurity in the education and the youth outcomes. So, my closing statement, for too long, there have been seeds of racial and economic inequality planted and cultivated in Athens and across the US. These disparities we see today are not accidental, they are systemic. They are the strange fruit of past injustices. So just as we shouldn't expect to sow an apple seed and reap oranges, we should not expect the seeds of the past to yield anything but strange fruit. We are not bound to this harvest, though. We can do something specific and directly to rectify and course correct. We have the power to plant new seeds, but if we don't act now, we are knowingly cultivating another generation of inequity rooted in racism. Let's choose that in Athens. Life is not a zero-sum game and be the generation that disrupts the cycle in this community. The first step towards that is in honoring the work of organizations like the AADM and passing this resolution, and hopefully for a future ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Money.
Good evening.
Good evening. First of all, my name is Daryl McManus. I'm also a T-Splat member and, uh, do a lot of other things in the community here. First of all, I would like to tell you, I'm not a minority. Do you understand that? My people been here before all y'all came here. My people didn't come from Africa. My people right here. Who built Athens? Who be, who built Georgia? The same ones you call minority. We're indigenous. We're not Africans. Don't call out things, call majority when a majority is a class. Why does a majority continuously, to, to continuously make everything white by everybody being classified as white that comes to this country? Why is that? Why is it always, you got the Hispanics turned white on the census? You got every single person that comes in this country turns white, and then you continuously make us a minority? You can't make nobody a minority that ain't afraid of you? I'm just letting you know, we're not afraid of you. What, you looking at me wrong, man? Don't look at me like that, please. Please, please, you give me, you give me bugs. Letting, letting you know, we're not playing with y'all. I told y'all that before when I came up here, and I'm gonna tell you again. We're not playing with you. We're tired of you playing with our money. We're tired of you playing with our time. We gotta come up here every time for y'all to do something messed up because you wanna do it. Not because it was done for the people in this community, but what you decide that you wanna do. Like you took the two hundred million dollars away from, from T-Splat and you decided to give them sixty million? What the use you have in the dag on community, you only give them sixty million? You took two hundred million from the people. What's wrong with y'all? Boys, girls, and club, girls' club doesn't have the proper facility. You got parents out here got to pay sixty, eighty, ninety, a hundred dollars for their kid to play football? Do you see what y'all doing? And then you wonder why you got crime. You got crime because you took all the dag on programs and put them in the colleges and think that the kid have had the money to pay for it to go to class? But you wanna stop crime. You are the crime. You're the criminals.
Thank you, Mr. McManus.
Who, who said that? Who said that?
The mayor.
Oh, you, you sound like you from back there. But anyway, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close.
Time is up, sir.
I, I could, I could have a whole lot more to say. But y'all the criminals.
Thank you, Mr. McManus.
Y'all hold, y'all hold the keys.
Your, your three minutes has expired, so I need to move on to the next speaker. It's good.
Good evening.
Good evening. Steve Williams, uh, three-ten Lakeland Drive here in Athens. Um, I wanna go off of what the young lady over here was talking about and get a little poetic, if I may. Um, and with our poet laureate here, I'm a little shy at doing that, but, I think what you folks have done, actually, over the last few years, is you have planted some trees. But there's still saplings, and there's not enough of them to thrive in a soil that, let's face it, this soil has deep, deep roots of racism and bigotry that go back hundreds of years. And I know that because in my seventy-six years, I can feel those roots right here in my, the pit of my stomach and in my heart. And you have to fight against that every day. Because we grew up in a culture, I'm seventy-six years old now, grew up in a culture that divided, didn't unite, that oppressed, didn't lift up. You folks have planted some trees. You've gotta keep planting. We're not there yet. But I think, um, what we've seen over the last few years is a council that's struggling, and it's tough. It's hard work dealing with this. It's not easy. There's no simple solutions. If there were, you would have had it by now. This is a talented group of folks. But you gotta keep working. Now's not the time to say, "Okay, we did it, we're done." Or, "Well, it's not working, you know, we haven't, we tried it for three years, it's not gonna work." It will work, but only, only if we keep on and keep at it. And I want to just close with a, uh, old Greek proverb. A society grows great when old men and women, and I count myself in that, plant trees in whose shade they know they will never sit. You folks are planting trees. Keep planting trees. Most of you will sit in that shade. I may not, but you will. Keep at it. I encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Xavier Walker of Athens, Georgia. I'm here to speak on behalf of the, um, item fifteen that's on the agenda tonight. I commend everyone that worked on this resolution. It's definitely a step in the right direction. I have no doubt that the hearts and hands that helped craft this resolution is in the right place. But I now just respectfully ask that the Commission table the vote for at least sixty to ninety days to give the community, city attorney, and the Commission an opportunity to turn the resolution into a city ordinance to be, to adopt in twenty twenty-five. This is something good. Again, this is a step in the right direction. We would just like to be able to build upon this. That's why we're asking for you all to not to vote on it tonight, give at least sixty to ninety days to get more people involved. Because again, I definitely feel this is a step in the right direction. It's kinda like you're getting ready to eat a steak off the grill. You don't wanna just gobble it down. You're gonna eat your favorite red velvet, red, red velvet, red velvet cake or ice cream and peach cobbler. You just don't gobble it down real quick and just swallow. You sit back, you chew on it, you bite on it, you eat it slow to really absorb the taste and enjoy it. So I'm just asking for you all to slow down, at least give sixty to ninety days for the community to kinda look at this and turn it into something more than a resolution, turn it into an ordinance that we can build upon. That's that. Also, as a side note, I've heard a lot tonight about black, white, yellow, and color. I hate that we still live in a society that we're still characterizing ourselves as a color in a crayon box. You know, we're more than that, and our DNA tells us we're more than that. We're brothers and we're sisters regardless of black, white, yellow. And the reason why I know this, our DNA tells us this. Biology tells us this. We've all heard the saying, "Mother's baby."
Father's made.
Father's made. Well, our DNA tells us that, they call it the mother gene. It's a gene that every man and woman in this room carries in their body regardless of the color, that comes from a mother gene of a tribe of black women that are still in Africa. So when we look at our faces and see black, white, straight hair, curly hair, we must realize that we're all brothers and sisters. And once we realize that we're brothers and sisters and come from the same original mother, this is not how you treat family. So if we take that approach and we go look in Google, look in AI, and realize we're brothers and sisters, and this is not, it's not how you treat family, and if that's the we realize that, some of these problems we would not be having. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Good evening.
My name is Dwight AC, and I live, uh, in Athens, one sixty Bloomington Drive. Uh, I'm here with a very, uh, simple, short request. And that's that you pass this, um, resolution. Also, that you look very closely at the boards and authorities that you have to be sure that they are representative of the, uh, community in, um, the, um, in a DEI sense, in, um, a sense that includes everyone. And, um, that doesn't mean tokens. Um, in particular, the, um, um, Peace Cobb, the Public Safety Civilian Oversight Board, um, has only one minority on it at this time. And I think that that's, it's a disgrace. It's a shame. And, um, Mayor and Commission, you guys need to take a close look at it. I'm sure you're busy. You have a lot of boards, you have a lot of autho, uh, authorities that you are responsible for and, and other things. But, uh, that's something that, um, can become a major problem if you have, uh, public safety that's off the leash. So, um, please take a look at it and see what you can do because the people that you add to that, uh, board, um, have to be, they, they have to be added by you, not by the community. Community can't vote for them. You gotta see it, and you gotta feel it, you gotta step forward, and you gotta say that's the right thing to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. AC.
Good evening.
Hi. My name is Shelby Branch. I live at two eight seven Morning Drive. Tonight, I represent the Athens Clark County Democrat Committee. For the reasons given tonight by this community, we are in support of resolution fifteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Branch. Good evening.
Uh, good evening. Mara Zuniga, Winerville, Georgia. This resolution on the surface may sound pretty good, but real cause, real causes are being exploited by hidden agendas. This has been the case over and over for many years here in Athens at the cost of the poor, the struggling middle class, and the older Athenians. This resolution outlines some of the same topics that have been covered by other resolutions, topics that are also covered by the Constitution of the United States. We live in a left-leaning city of active Democrats, liberals, and progressives. It votes blue most of the time. I should say all of the time. So why are we having so many issues over the same topics? Could it be that having causes is the way to advance hidden agendas that favor only the few? The select few would need to have minorities or repressed groups involved and their causes. And there would have to be some solid points in the resolution so that the minorities could get on board with it, which this resolution does have. For too long, minorities have trusted agendas coming from folk who look like them. But that would be, but what would it in for them? What would it be in there for them? For selling an agenda that is contrary to the progress of their community? Possibly a piece of the pie in the forms of funding for their organizations? Recognition, a seat at the board, a ticket at a gala? These folk within these organizations could be very well pretending to serve the community when in fact they are serving themselves while helping advance agendas that favor only a few. So after all the fluff in this resolution, it comes down to this, the pork. A request for the local government to continue making a commitment to give money to the same folk in the same name of a cause or causes, whatever the flavor of the month is, even though they have not brought any significant change or progress to their communities. As Athens has become more liberal, the poverty rate has risen. Last year, Athens had a thirty percent poverty rate. With all the money that has been invested, I would state again and again, accountability first. Let's leave the causes to the side and look at the numbers. Not one more dime or resolution until we start seeing some successes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nega.
Good evening.
Good evening. Christine Byce, 340 Whitehead Road. I'm here to speak, well, I came here to speak in opposition of item fifteen. But after listening to some of the other people back here, I've changed my mind and would say that we could have both. We could have the resolution and the ordinance. But on the condition that after you, if you pass the resolution, that you, with all deliberate speed, also go ahead and do an ordinance and start working on that. So I'm just going to speak what I was going to talk about before I changed my mind because it's still pertinent. But so while the resolution is well-intentioned, the problem is that it is just a resolution. It doesn't have any teeth. It carries no political weight. It's not a change in policy. Instead, resolutions by definition are largely symbolic and reflective of intent. They do not carry the force of law and cannot ensure accountability. Instead, what we need is an ordinance, a legally binding policy that would have real consequences for inaction or violations. I'm not a native Athenian, but I've been here for almost thirty years. And I will say not much has changed. Some things have gotten worse, matter of fact. But we've committed to the transparency and equity and inclusion and belonging. So tabling this item and adopting, I'm sorry. So adopting a resolution and an ordinance are both ways to make a good, get on that commitment. Communities of color have waited long enough for significant and sustainable change. Sixty more days to work on doing an ordinance is a reasonable request. And I'll leave you with a quote from civil rights activist James Baldwin that a good friend of mine shared with me. And so he's speaking about time and progress. He said, "You always told me it takes time. It's taken my father's time, my mother's time, my uncle's time, my brother's and sister's time, my nieces and nephews' time. How much time do you need for your progress? How much more time do we need for the progress we all claim to want so badly? Let's move forward with both an ordinance and a resolution." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byce.
Good evening.
Good evening. Oh, God is good. I can feel a spirit in here. But, Lord, help me. But the house is a problem. Y'all got to do something. Y'all gonna have to do something. And y'all gonna have to do something very soon because the time is winding down. I've been coming up here, and I've been coming up here. What got me was, number fifteen was, how did y'all come up with this? That's what got me. I want to know how did y'all come up with this? Because I come in here practically every Tuesday night asking and begging and pleading, asking y'all to help us with affordable homes. But now that scene I seen, number fifteen, revolution, revolution, what a revolution situation, I felt like it's a joke. The reason why I felt like it's a joke is because y'all hadn't did anything. I hadn't seen y'all do anything. People from Lashley Heights is still going through, people over down Bunny Show Road is still going through. People still calling me and crying, and I'm right along with them. But I'm not homeless, but I'm not where I'm supposed to be because I got put out because investors came in. So what have y'all done? I heard you talk about what all y'all done, but what I did? What did y'all do? Because I hadn't seen y'all do anything. No more than sit back and laugh and pick it up about us coming up here and talking about homes. Kids need homes. You want to buy mental health? That's why it's mental health out here. Because they don't have nowhere to lay their head. They going from house to house. That's the problem. See, you're not doing affordable home. I'm not asking y'all to do a dollar home. I'm asking y'all to do something that people can afford to stay in and have a place to sleep. Y'all go home every night in y'all home. Y'all don't have to worry about the people out here on the street. Y'all don't have to worry about them investors coming here taking y'all a place. But I got news for you, it's just a matter of time. Because what you do for the poor is what going to come back at you. So if you're not going to stand by the poor, the Lord said, well, then I'm going to have to knock on your door. So when it comes to your door, you ain't going to like it. And I already see in the start as it is now. But I'm asking y'all, I have neighbors. All neighbors got took away from us. Somebody that we came in a community together, knocked on the door that we were raised up. Knocked on the door. Do you have some water? Do you have some bread? Do you have some milk? These are the people that you need in your life. That's what neighbors is about. Neighbors are about people standing by one another, loving and caring for one another, being there for hard time. So I'm sick and tired of coming up here and talking about affordable homes. Everybody, just like the guy said, up here, we ain't scared, we just tired.
Ms. Barbara, appreciate your time. It's up, but could you leave your name for the clerk for the record?
It's here. It's right here. Displacement. That's my address until you get me somewhere to go.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. I would like to urge you to vote no for Agenda Item Number Nineteen. The origin of the Classic Center Authority was actually created in nineteen eighty-eight. The original board members traveled far and wide and visited many facilities to ensure that what we created right here in Athens was right for our community. They felt strongly that the board under political control would be too risk averse to make the necessary long-term decisions. And yet, a board under private control would be unable to obtain low-cost financing needed to expand. The obvious answer was to establish an authority free from the direct control of either group but whose members were selected by the current commission for a limited term. You know, for thirty years, that has served us very well. Your authority, handpicked by you, has never touched a dime of the general fund revenue. They have exceeded all expectations of the original studies done prior to building out each facility. They created a business that today boasts twenty-nine million dollars a year, and they did it from the ground up. They have always taken care of their own capital improvements and never became a burden on this community. To do so, your authority took significant risk in a number of areas. They promoted their own shows to the community and the region. They developed hockey programs, which today fill the new arena. They cultivated huge convention businesses that bring jobs to this community. The result of those has led to a city benefiting to the tune of sixty million dollars a year in economic impact. Having commissioners on the board could very well jeopardize that success today and in the future, hindering our ability to raise private funds, which we do annually, to support sixty thousand dollars in scholarships to people right here in this community. It would limit our ability to secure the needed corporate partners to support things like the Atkins Ford Arena. It would dilute the focus of our mission to drive economic growth through tourism. It would slow the speed of decision-making needed to operate a facility of this size and structure, restricting our ability to lobby for things needed both in the state and federal programs. Our history and the quality of our operation truly speak for itself. We have built a great facility, or I should say facilities-
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
-that will bring millions for the local businesses. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi. I'm Trish Small. My address is 270 Barrow Street. Good evening, Mayor, Gertz, and Commissioners. I stand up here this evening not as the vice chair of the Classic Center Authority Board, but as an Athens citizen who has witnessed firsthand the impact that the Classic Center has had on our community. With the recent opening of the Atkins Ford Arena, we've reached a milestone that will benefit Athens-Clark County for generations to come. This success was not accidental. It was a result of years of strategic planning, responsible stewardship, and deep commitment to serving our community, your constituents. The authority board that oversees the Classic Center was not self-appointed. Each of us was carefully interviewed by you, entrusted with ensuring that the Classic Center remains a driver of economic growth and cultural enrichment. This structure was intentionally designed to ensure responsible, forward-thinking leadership while maintaining financial viability. We've taken that responsibility seriously and have worked diligently to fulfill the mission before us. Now, Commissioner Cole Pepper is proposing that two commissioners be added to our board under the premise of increasing oversight. This drastic request feels hasty, not completely thought out, or punitive legislation in the least. Increased oversight has already been established with tonight's new business item number sixteen, which includes the establishment of the Arena District Steering Committee, an oversight committee. To ensure transparency and accountability, a steering committee is to be formed to provide additional oversight for future development specifically to ensure that the bonds used to build the arena are repaired, repaid responsibly. The Classic Center Board is not a political entity. It's a team of professionals appointed by you, dedicated to Athens-Clark County's success. The proposal to alter our structure is not about increased oversight. It is an attempt to inject self-interest and self-interest alone. If we allow political interests to override the very foundation of what has made the Classic Center successful, we risk losing the momentum we have worked all so hard to build. I urge you to reject this unnecessary and harmful measure. Let us continue to work together to ensure that the Classic Center remains a cornerstone of economic growth, cultural vibrancy, and a community for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Small.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Charlie Maddox. I live at 115 Avalon Drive, Athens, Georgia. And I come today asking for denial of item nineteen. The Unified Government of Athens-Clark County already has established a commission by commissioners to oversee the operations of the Classic Center Authority, which operates and the arena and the Classic Center. Appointed members of the Classic Center Board of Directors will be subject to possible voting contrary to the will of commissioners that are elected who then have oversight over us. Someone that has oversight over another person can and will influence their decision-making. Each year, the Unified Government of Athens-Clark County has received, reviewed, and accepted a certified audit of the actions of the authority. Just like this meeting tonight, the meeting of the Classic Center Authority is open to the public, and the minutes of every meeting is available to anybody and everybody. There is no secret going on. Individuals are supposed to act in the best interest of the authority that they serve. Nobody can serve two masters. And that is why the original charter document excluded any elected official to avoid any conflict of interest and set forth that each director of the authority be appointed by the Unified Government of Athens-Clark County to ensure proper and transparent respect. The other development authorities that have been listed, they are not charged with the same mission of the Classic Center. None have the budget, the facilities that are to be maintained, the staff, the responsibility that comes with operating an entity that must generate its own operating revenue outside that part of hotel and motel tax. The Classic Center has and had, has a significant impact on this community. Sixty-seven million dollars economic impact. That, my friends, is economic development. Jobs, income, opportunities. The Unified Government does not fund any operations, and this nonprofit has, from the inception, had to make a profit to continue to exist. The Classic Center of Athens and the Atkins Arena belongs to Athens-Clark County. It is yours. It is ours. And it belongs to those citizens. And I know that no one else but the Classic Center Authority Board of Directors, empowering their CEO, Paul Kramer, could have engineered such a success as you have now. The additional expenses that would come from this could jeopardize the ongoing operation. As I said, there are no secret meetings. There are no hidden agendas. The minutes are there. The facts are there.
Thank you, Ms. Maddox.
And again, you all voted unanimously to support it.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Commission. I apologize. I should have come down here a lot earlier because there are a number of things that you deserve a lot of congratulations on. And one of them is that arena down there. I was here through most of the meetings, both sides. I heard on the other side, and then I heard, and how many times were y'all consulted? Did y'all have the control you wanted? Did you make the votes you wanted? And I was so pleased and proud of one of the commissioners who came down there and took the time to say, I was wrong. I fought this. I didn't trust. But now I see what you've done, and I know that it's good. We have got one of the finest facilities in the state. We are just beginning to see what can happen, what it can bring, what it can produce. I don't really blame you for not wanting to get more involved with it. It's kind of like the newest toy, and it's the best toy on town. It is our best economic engine that we have anything to do with. Most of the things on your resolution tonight that you're looking at about inequities, I know from having sat in your seats and wanted so much to change those things that it's hard to change those things. But here we have a business, a business in our community run by you, run by the people you chose. And you've done a good job, by the way. You've done a good job. We have had great leadership. We've never had a dishonest moment down there. And we've, there's never been a promise that wasn't exceeded by the Classic Center Authority. I think that you ought to, I like the idea of the Oversight Committee. I think it will help you not have the problems you had before and not knowing exactly what was happening and staying informed and then having to get informed here. I think that would help you. But I think the resolution to change the authority at this time will hurt you. And it will hurt you and the community that you most need the support of, and that's the business community. I know from trying to raise funds for one of your facilities that you have a lot of control over, that people are resistant to supporting things that they think will slow down good business decisions. And unfortunately, they see government that way. I hope that you will decide against one and take the other as an opportunity to improve the communication between you. But the other thing I really want to say is that when I read Resolution Fifteen, I want you to know that we have been on the front page of the New York Times for a reparation project that has thrilled the world, has impressed people and shown people the right way to do these things. And that's just one. And you've got a lot of those. If you look at what they want you to do-
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
-it begins with continue and increase. So continue and increase. Thank you.
Good evening.
How you doing, Mayor Gertz? My name is Charles. Hard at fifteen, hell dry. So I got two resolutions that I want to speak on. I want to speak first about the one, the resolution for the black. I support that resolution. I just ask that maybe you put it on table for sixty days, right? You put it on table for sixty days and give everybody an opportunity so we can work on an ordinance together as a community. So nobody won't feel left out. Get more of our black commissioners involved with it because they know the black community. The black commissioners, get involved with it because they know the community. Now, I wasn't going to speak on this right here, but I want the public to kind of know what's going on. I support also- I support also Resolution nineteen. I'm looking at these people coming up here talking about their Classic Center. That Classic Center ain't for us, for one. And for number two, they're a hundred and fifty million dollars in the hole. So whoever made the decision... Now, I'm saying this so the people that watch it can understand this, too. I ain't never seen Charlie Maddox come in here, Gwen O'Looney, none of these people come in here until you start trying to get on their board to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to do. They're a hundred and fifty million dollars in the hole, and it's going to come from taxpayers' money. Whoever came up with this... I don't know who made the resolution, who made the recommendation, but I think it's time for now to put some commissioners in a part of that Classic Center so we can see where our money going. A hundred and fifty million dollars? Y'all only took out three, what, three bonds now? Three bonds? A hundred and fifty million dollars? You know how many people we could house and get off the street and feed with a hundred and fifty million dollars? But y'all pouring into this Classic Center, and it ain't for us. Ask Paul Kramer, how many black people come down now? I hate to say it, like, I'm keeping it real. It's going to be real tonight. It's Black History Month, and we steady getting jerked around all kind of ways, the black community. We getting jerked around. Put two commissioners on that board, and let's see where that hundred and fifty million dollar going to. Let do that. I know you don't like Melissa Link, but I'm going to say it, and you going to deal with it because my name Charlie. I don't feel nothing but God. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dan Mark, one nine six, Alps Route, Athens, Georgia. It's my business location. I'm here to speak in the negative on what's at item fifteen, you know, against item fifteen or whatever. The issue for me is that I don't agree with the language. I think the intent is good, but the language is bad. In Athens, Georgia, the disproportionate amount of the impoverished people are black Americans. Disproportionate amount are black Americans. The University of Georgia sits on the graves of black Americans. Black Americans fought in the Revolutionary War. Black Americans fought in the Civil War. Black Americans fought in World War One, World War Two, Vietnam, Korea, Spanish-American, you name it. Black Americans built the University of Georgia. Black Americans built the country. South Carolina was built by black Americans. I was there a couple months ago. In the cement of the people who built this country is their handprints, black Americans. Fourteenth Amendment, when it talks about born and naturalized citizens, black Americans are the natural born brand, therefore putting us on equal basis with the founding fathers of this country. The founding fathers of this country were Anglo-Saxon primarily. Anglo-Saxons in this country have considerable wealth. Black Americans in Athens, Georgia is the disproportionate amount of impoverished people. And we're being asked to share scraps with one-eye, one-horn, flying, purple people eaters, everybody but black Americans, white women, gay white men, immigrants, indigenous, you name it, everybody. We have to share something with them. Four hundred years, nothing specific to the people who built this country, who fought in every war. This country exists because black Americans were the financial engines. The bones, blood, sweat, and tears of our ancestors is what bred life into this thing we call the United States of America. There would be no United States of America if not for our ancestors. Why are we still...
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming down tonight.
Asking for scraps? So I'm here, fifteenth. I'm not for it. I'm tired of this, trying to share everything with everybody.
Sure, your three minutes has expired.
We deserve what's ours, strictly.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm going to be brief because Mayor Girk's cut me off real quick last time, so I'm going to get it in within a minute. I'm not going to add to what's all been said, but just want to say a few things that are going to take us all over the page. Quazin Payne, I reside at 145 Walker Drive. I own and operate Payne Construction. First, I want to thank Brad for coming back and filling a much-needed position. I've known Brad for a very long time. When I was on the planning commission, he asked me, what did he think about being the director? And I said, "Yeah, Brad, you can do it." He never came back to beat me up, so I guess he enjoyed the position. I want to thank you for coming back and serving. I don't know how much they had to twist your arm to get you here, but thank you. About number fifteen, the resolution, Mocha did... You did an excellent job on writing it, but the Bible says when you hurt someone, you should apologize. Mocha and I, we agree on the essence of the resolution, but we differ on how we're going to get there. She wants a resolution. I wanted to be more concrete with her ordinance. I sent people to tell you that, but they use their own agenda to keep you away from me, so I just wanted you to know that if I hurt your feelings, I'm sorry. Okay? That being said, we're going to move on to this last item, number nineteen, which is the Classic Center and the arena. I helped work on and build the standard, which is right next door to the arena, and that facility sits on the site of the old loaf company. If you remember, all types of contamination, they dealt with tax credit, browning and all. And anyone that is in Athens that knows anything about Athens knows that site has two things, has bad soils, and it has rock. So there should not have been a fifteen million dollar change order to deal with those issues. So I am in agreement that we need more oversight on that commission because at the end of the day, it will boil back to the tax people, to the taxpayers, and that I'm opposed to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. If there are anyone else here to speak to older new business this evening, again, that is item four and twelve through nineteen. All right, seeing none, we will come to commission action. Item number four, first item on older new business, is an ordinance promoting resilient operations for transformative, efficient, and cost-saving transportation grant for live-stream pipe replacement. This is part of our ongoing effort to fund some of our infrastructure that is under the roads and invisible until we have a storm and we see it emerge on places like Olympic Drive as we have several times in recent years. So Commissioner Johnson, you ask that this be removed for discussion?
Yes, I'm going to... I wanted to speak on this, and it can go back on the agenda, but I am going to say this as often as I can about the lack of the Title VI coordinator position being filled. And if you don't know what that is, I can share a website with you at the end. But this agenda is for promoting resilient operations for transformative, efficient, and cost-saving transportation grant program. It is actually for... It is through the F... I'm sorry, excuse me, through the Department of Transportation, and there is a qualifier for us to receive these funds, and I'm going to continue to say it. While I brought notes with me, and I want to say it until someone behind the rail is interested enough to join me in the conversation because we are out of compliance. I looked on our Athens Clark County website for the Title VI coordinator, and it does not list a person that holds that position. It does refer you to the Department of Transit if you have a complaint, but let me read you some of the criteria for why this position is so important. This Title VI coordinator is responsible for... And again, it is... It's something that we are required to have. They are responsible for the evaluation and monitoring and compliance of contracting projects. We have tradesmen in our community that cannot work on our T-sploes, our sploes, our TAD projects. Another thing, they officially identify and extinguish unfair advantages in the construction industry. They're on top of it. This is not for the minorities. It's for minorities and everybody. It is to make those aware who live in this community about projects in this community. This is a requirement, and we are... There is an agenda item to accept funding, and we are not in compliance. I'm going to keep saying it because I hope somebody hears me, and if anyone knows someone from the Department of Transportation, this is something that we need to take seriously. Had we taken it seriously, and if we took it seriously, we might not have needed a disparity study. We might not have needed a Department of Inclusion, a DEI office, Human Relations Commission. We might not have, had we taken this role seriously. It is called the Title VI coordinator. This is a position that the Department of Transportation at the federal level requires of us in order to receive funding. That's all I have. Thank you.
Would Commissioner like to put a motion on the floor? Commissioner Myers?
I'll make a motion to approve this item.
I'll second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Myers, second from Commissioner Link. Commissioner Myers, any follow-up?
The only follow-up I have is that, you know, I appreciate Commissioner Johnson bringing this up, and I'd like it if, you know, it looks to me like the Title VI coordinator is responsible for ensuring that programs and activities comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, if I'm reading that correctly. But so I'd like to know more about this, and I'd also like to get a response, something from staff to explain how we are in compliance or need to better our compliance. I think that would make sense. But I'm for the item. Let's vote on the item.
Thank you, Commissioner. Between the manager's office and the attorney's office, could we get some response? Thank you. Appreciate it. Commissioner Link?
Yeah, I agree. I'd like some more information on the requirements for a Title VI coordinator, and, you know, as we're entering budget considerations, you know, we might need to consider funding such a position, especially as this government's grown. You know, we... There may be fewer of these grants, quite frankly, available to us, and quite frankly, there are probably not going to be awarding grants that benefit minority and black and brown communities anymore. Already, the Title VI website has been scrubbed of the word gender. If you go to that website, you'll see that there's an executive order directing them to remove the word gender and replace it with sex. So we are in a very fluid situation in this country, so I just think we need to be very cognizant of that.
Commissioner Davenport?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I'll forward this to Commissioner Johnson, but on November eleventh, twenty nineteen, we appointed the inclusion officer as a Title VI coordinator. So that was voted on unanimously by this body, but if that's wrong, I apologize, but it looks like that, you know, if you read the history of that, that that position was filled by the inclusion officer.
Thanks, Commissioner. Anyone else before I return to Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Thornton?
Well, that makes me even more curious because, and I think this is what leads to us looking like we don't know what's going on because if that position was supposed to be a Title VI position, we never got any kind of reports or... And we know we should have gotten that. So, I mean, I think the intention of the inclusion office, like a lot of other things we do, are not clear. So if that's a person, and if that was supposed to be that, that should have been in that job description, and anything that findings or complaints should have gotten to us. So it's not... I'm glad that Commissioner Johnson brought that up because I didn't know that, and I'm glad you responded because that, again, shows how inefficient we are with some of these departments, and we don't get those kind of reports to say what. So I'm almost agreeing with Darryl. I think sometimes we are criminals because we do not look at the things we put in place.
I think Assistant Manager Saunders had some information for us.
So Commissioner Davenport is correct, but there's an update. My understanding is that for a while, when it was the inclusion office, there was a look at doing Title VI through that position. As they started to get into their other work around Lenin Town and some of the racial justice work, it was decided that it would be better fit to move to safety and risk. Ultimately, what I'm hearing here and what I'm seeing on our own website, thanks to Commissioner Johnson, is that this is not clear. It is not well advertised, and it's something we can do better, and so we will follow up with a report and improvements.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. In two thousand and seventeen, I was given this role, and I didn't know what it was, and it wasn't written into a job description. I was just told it was my responsibility. The departments that are affected by this, by Title VI, is Planning Department, Transit, Transportation and Public Works, and I think Public Utilities. It's mainly the departments that receive funding from GDOT. And it... I can't tell you when it started, but I actually read the contract. It's about a five-hundred-page contract. The section for the Title VI coordinator is about a hundred and fifteen pages. One month, I took it home and I read through it over the weekend, and I realized I was not doing any of the responsibilities to hold that position, and it seemed to be very important. Their work is to go out and to identify people who actually work in the community and bridge gaps to match them with individuals who actually are construction owners or builders. And so it's a great program. The thing is, I was so uncomfortable that I had not done my job, and I did not know what the job was, that I reached out to a generic number on the Department of Transportation's website. Well, twenty-four hours later, I received a phone call from someone who is actually the person responsible for Title VI for the state of Georgia. He told me to immediately resign from that role or to give it up. And Patrick Davenport... I'm so sorry. Commissioner Davenport is correct. It was removed from the responsibility of the office that I used to work in and was reassigned to the Office of Diversity and Inclusion. It has been a position and title only. It is a lot of work when you read the one hundred and fifteen or so pages, and it really is a person by itself. It should not be sandwiched, and I am familiar with it being transitioned over to the Human Resources Department and Safety and Risk. That's the history on it.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, I've got a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
All right, one abstention. Please note that, Madam Clerk. All right, we're going to move on to item twelve and...
There's actually an ordinance for that.
Oh, there's an ordinance associated with this. Thank you, Attorney Drake. I appreciate you noting that.
The ordinance made in FY two thousand twenty thousand offering capital visit for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so provide grant funding if awarded from the Federal Highway Administration or the United States Department of Transportation, protect program grant, and for other purposes.
All right, we'll just affirm that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
I'm so sorry.
Say it, you abstain.
I abstain.
There you go. All right, thank you all for the record. All right, moving on to old business. Item twelve, see an updated agenda report regarding the Newton Bridge Road TAD Advisory Committee recommendations, kind of as requested. Staff has done some work with one of our professional services who we can call to get some additional work from when we don't have the in-cous capacity, and so Atlas has provided us with a recommendation for doing a corridor plan for Newton Bridge. And then in addition, Commissioner Thornton and Commissioner Fisher have crafted some language to ensure that any future funding would necessarily return to this body for approval. So entertain a motion regarding this. Commissioner Thornton?
Athens just spun in my head. So was this actually bid it out?
This is an on-call consultant, which means that we've got a stable of professional service consultants, and so we have to find somebody who's got the capacity to do the work. And so these were, in some ways, pre-approved by this body.
See, here we go again. You know, I'm going to go ahead on and vote for this, and I'm not going to stop it. It goes back to being transparent. I really... When you say on-call, and I think it came up at the last... I really, when you say on-call, and I think it came up at the last meeting about on-call consultants and people who can do stuff, I would like to see a list of who's on-call.
Can management team get that for us?
I need to see that.
Appreciate it.
And I need to see, because I did not know Atlas was going to be the on-call person, but I'm good with it for now.
Thanks. And would you like to make a motion?
Oh, I'll make a motion to...
Approve the commission to find option.
Yes, with approval.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Thornton. I've got a second from Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Fisher is the secondary of the next opportunity to make any remarks.
Yes, and I think to Commissioner Thornton's point, anytime we look at projects, it needs to be designed and built. You don't do a project and you build first and you design, you design it first and then you build it. So, to her point, I would also like to see who those at-call or at, those design people are so we can take a look at who that, you know, where they come from, are they local or they out, you know, out of state or what. But I think it's important that when we start looking at these projects, we design the project first and then we build.
I've got a, Commissioner Johnson?
I have a quick question. Where's on-call listed at? What page is it on? I'm sorry. I don't know. I have a question, but I just want to make sure I ask it correctly.
So, the, the design components of the agenda report, is that proposal from Atlas?
I am having a very difficult time understanding why a design firm is on-call. Can I have a list of examples that would dictate why design has to be on-call? On-call kind of sounds to me emergent, urgent, right away, before tomorrow. And so, when we, when we talk about design, that's, that's actually the opposite. I would like more clarity why we have a on-call contractor. I know we have in other departments. I would like ultimately a list of all of our contractors that are on-call.
And we certainly can get that. I'll begin and I think the management team may be able to provide a little bit more context. It's the case that a lot of activities that we pursue don't require a full-time in-house staff and so we sometimes need to pursue some professional services. Sometimes the attorney's office will get an outside attorney who's got some specific expertise in an area of law, for example.
So, is it more on-con, under contract and as needed? Is that what it is?
It's an opportunity to kind of reach out and get some capacity that we just don't have in-house and in many cases, just don't need consistently in-house. But again, I understand from the management team that we can get a list of those.
Thank you.
So, is there any other kind of perspective you provide?
The only other thing I would add is that when we go about selecting on-call consultants, it is done in a competitive manner. So, it is done as an RFP and part of that is evaluation on pricing and how things will move forward. And then, once we have these, the suite of on-call consultants, we do rely on them for a scope. Ultimately, this process is meant to make us more efficient and not spend, you know, hours and hours and hours on procurement. But staff will at times get an on-call proposal that they think they need to modify the scope or that they are unhappy with the scale of it and then they will take it at a different route on the procurement front.
And I believe we vote on that list, correct? We vote on that list.
Yes.
That's correct. Commissioner Hamby, anything else? I know you had your hand up.
No, I was just going to point out that we, we vote on the list of on-call folks. I don't know when we vote on it, but I know we voted on it.
That's right. It's a recurrent cycle.
Yeah.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, we voted on June 7th, 2022 because it's the number five of the history of the next item, the Finson Drive pedestrian improvement, and it lists the process and the six firms that got that. So, that's all in the next agenda item.
Thanks, Commissioner Myers. I appreciate you pointing that out. All right. All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Would folks like to take a break?
Yes.
All right, let's take 10 minutes. It's 8:15. Let's be back in our seats at 8:25 so that we can continue.
All right, everyone, we're going to go ahead and return to the agenda so we can go ahead and move on with business. Everybody go ahead and have a seat. We're going to go ahead and move on with business. Yeah, we're going to go ahead and move on with business. Thank you for being back with us. Good to have you here. We're going to go ahead and continue with business. All right, everyone, I apologize for this, but Assistant Manager Sanders kind of noted that in the way that the previous agenda item was constructed for number 12, the bullet point, which is the action item to move to the design, was actually embedded in facts and issues rather than embedded in part of the motion. And so we just need to have a vote affirming that we're moving forward with the design contract with Atlas just because of the way the agenda item was constructed. So that action item to do the design was up in facts and issues rather than in the motion component. So it includes the CDO language around future expenditures that you crafted and that we would move forward with the Atlas contract to the dollar value of $326,150. So do I hear a motion for approval?
Wait a minute, question, question.
Yes.
So that dollar amount, is that coming from the TAD dollars?
That's coming from existing TAD dollars that are already in the bank.
Okay.
Yes. So do I hear a motion for approval, Commissioner Thornton?
Yes, I make a motion.
Second. All right. So we've got a motion from Commissioner Thornton and a second from Commissioner Fisher. And so this is to utilize the language that you see on the first page in the commission-defined option as well as move forward with the contract with Atlas in the amount up to $326,150. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you all, I appreciate that. One of those things that I didn't want to have to make sure that we had to cover in a Scrivener's error question with the attorney. All right, item 13 is SPOLOST 2020, Project 31, very near here. These are Vincent Drive pedestrian improvements. And of course, staff has put forward a couple of options. Would a commissioner like to make a motion for one of those options? Commissioner Johnson?
District 5 and District 6 residents, please don't get mad with me, but I would like to initiate a new process for estimating the value and the cost of our projects. I would like, I don't, I'm not, I don't want to deny this, but I don't want it approved. I want the process for SPOLOST funding to be clearer and...
Commissioner Johnson, at this point, we'd have to place a motion on the floor to do something.
What would you suggest?
And then there would be a subsequent action that the commission could take at another meeting.
Thank you. I motion that we hold this until there's clarification and improvement in the SPOLOST project for 60 days.
So the motion from Commissioner Johnson is to hold for 60 days. And there's a second from Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Johnson, go ahead and describe if you'd like.
Thank you. I read a lot of agenda items, especially for the SPOLOST projects, and the order in which the projects roll out is confusing. It is not clear. There are multiple project programs connected. That is not the intent of the program. There is a 2000, for this one in particular, there are two projects, 12 and 31. I think that I'm confused after reviewing and reading so much. I know that there are 12,501 other individuals in my community that are also confused because I get the phone calls. There's a question about what the first thing, the schematic design. The second thing, well, then we do the RFP. But you want the approval for the funding first. Nobody finds the house that they want, moves in, and then says to the bank, we just moved in, how much is our note going to be? I think approving an amount that's almost double, 46% increase, is outrageous. I'm not saying it's not justified. I just need to see the numbers. That's how I understand what makes sense. And I can actually justify and explain, if that's the cost, that's the cost. But I can't explain it the way it's written. I can't explain. And I would like us to change our process, the order in which we start requesting our approval and the type of information we need in order to make the most responsible decisions for our community.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Taylor, any follow-up?
I totally agree with Commissioner Johnson. Being a new commissioner myself and being involved with having to designate residents and stuff for SPOLOST and T-SPOLOST, I do find that the process is tedious. I do find that, and even speaking with former manager Nikki Jones, we both agree that this process should be more simplified so that residents and new incoming commissioners understand and also so that it can be more inclusive with more insight from residents deciding like where the money is going and how much money is being spent. Because if we're honest, a lot of the SPOLOST and T-SPOLOST things, money go towards it from all over the county, but we only see it pop up in certain places. And so I totally agree with Commissioner Johnson. Maybe we should look at how the SPOLOST and T-SPOLOST process actually works. We had to get, like, me and Commissioner Thornton had to get like a crash course a few months ago in T-SPOLOST, which is fine, like, it's a part of the job. But for normal working people who goes to work and put money into this pot should also understand on a very basic level how it works.
All right, so there's a motion, a second on the floor to hold for 60 days pending development of a new SPOLOST project sequence process. Commissioner Wright?
Yeah, I've been, I understand the learning curve and from being on the commission 12 years that the newer folks need more time, but we also spend a lot of time wondering why things aren't done yet. So I think that we could probably, we could do both and move this forward. This is a public safety thing. It's one of my priorities. I know this area has been waiting, I mean, we're talking about a SPOLOST 2020, five years ago, and funding from 20, T-SPOLOST 2018. These are funds that have been developed and been collected in pennies so that we can do things. And so I'm not saying that we shouldn't relook and maybe shift the tiering or address some of that. But I don't think we need to hold up public safety improvements for a community that, this is well deserved. There hasn't been any question about how this deserves to be done in this area. And I think that a retreat would be a good time to talk about it. We, that certainly wasn't what came up when we were in our retreat, if that's something that we wanted to address. But I don't think we should hijack moving forward on SPOLOST projects for people's learning curve.
Would you like to make a substitute motion, Commissioner?
Oh, yeah, I was going to just hope that that one failed, but I'll do a substitute motion to go with the agenda item as it is. I think it's commission-defined option of Thornton and Fisher, sorry, and a little bit of a mayor-defined option in there too.
I'll second.
Second.
So anyway, that's the substitute motion to go with as is.
Got a substitute motion from Commissioner Wright and a second from Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Fisher is the second, or go ahead.
Yeah, and first of all, I agree with what my two colleagues have previously spoke about. And I've already spoken with the mayor about we need to take a look at how we, our SPOLOST projects are operated. And I think we will do that in the future. But since most of it is in District 5 and District 9, I appreciate my colleagues speaking out on it. But for me, it is a safety issue. We're talking about trying to get kids from Roland Ridge to Holland Park. And I think we need to go ahead and move on this as soon as possible. I mean, there's no, last thing you want to see is have a child get hit on Newton Bridge Road trying to go down there and there's no sidewalk and there's no safety features. We had two, actually four fatalities in that Newton Bridge, Calfwood area, and, you know, things like that, can't wait. So, and I understand the 60 days, it may not put us back far, but I think we need to go ahead and move on it where we had originally. We've been working on this since I, myself and Commissioner Thornton did the CDO. We thought it was a good project, and I'd just like to see us move forward with it.
Commissioner Davenport. Commissioner Link?
Yeah, we're on number 13, the Vincent Drive.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, this project has been waiting in the wings for like almost seven years now. It was conceived of after a horrible fatality on Vincent Drive and reports from constituents. I, it used to be District 3 and District 5, and I represented District 3 for eight years. And I've done plenty of door knocking up and down Vincent Drive, and it is terrifying. And there have been reports from folks who live there, you know, cars ending up in their front yards. There are children who are, you know, trying to get to Holland Park for their soccer games. It's a scary situation, and people are desperate for this sidewalk. I got plenty of emails about it when I represented that community. And then Commissioner Denson and I, you know, put our heads together to figure out how to assure that we got pedestrian safety on that corridor. And we met with representative from Bike Athens and urged them to put forth a T-SPOLOST proposal, which went before the citizen T-SPOLOST committee, and they selected it immediately. There was very little debate on the need for that project. And it ended up on the list that went before the citizens and was voted on in a referendum. And, you know, even before I was commissioner, I recognized the T-SPOLOST process and the process for designing these projects. We are not moving into an already built house. We are building a house, which means you have to hire an architect first, and then you hire the engineer, and then you decide your budget, and then you procure your materials. There is a process to building something new. You're not just conceiving of something and moving in. So I understand that the process for building, especially when it comes to things that need serious engineering, which this stretch does, it doesn't have curb and gutter and stormwater. It has the stormwater ditches. It has multiple driveways with culverts that you need to get through. You know, there's curbs in the road. There's a lot of engineering that's going to go into this, hence I see the increased price tag and knowing just the massive inflation that we've seen, which is probably only going to increase with workforces being deported. And I, you know, I thoroughly understand the increase in the price. And I'm desperate to see these folks get some safety so those kids can get to that park safely.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. So this is the second of, this is the second time the same person referred to me and learning curve and/or learning ability in one day. And so let me just share my learning ability. I brought the SPOLOST list, and let's talk about what projects get started. So there are, out of the 37 or so projects that have not started yet, I can go through the list, but if you did your own homework, you would know that there are many projects that haven't started. I did not say I did not want the project to start. I simply said 60 days is not going to kill us. I am searching for a solution. I'm not trying to kick the can. I'm not on that team. And what someone said about projects just go up and I'm okay with the project being more expensive, well, usually when people buy houses, they have budgets. So that, I will say that. This is me not saying I do not want this to happen. This is me saying very clearly, I do not trust the process. Money is missing. I cannot explain it. I don't know what you talk to your constituents, but when I speak to mine, I want to be able to make sense. I have my documents right here with me. I know the projects, all the projects that haven't started. And most importantly, I've just spent the last 15 weeks with department directors who have all shared with me that projects don't get done because they can't find anybody to hire. So just because you prove, you go ahead and approve it tonight, if it passes, that's fine. But it is not going to start tomorrow.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I'm going to support this moving forward, but I would like to suggest that the mayor work with manager's office to get a really thorough overview of SPOLOST for all of us. We're going into a process now where we're going to, with T-SPOLOST 2026. You know, as people have heard before, I had the opportunity to serve on SPOLOST committees. That was a lot of learning. I used to call those graduate courses, going through that, that learning about that. And so I think that we need to make sure it's really clear, and this is, we need more than a 10-minute presentation, on the legislation, the selection project, how the budgets are put together, the history of the projects, like, so that we can see where they all are over the time. And the tiering, and I think that's really important because that's something that is, it doesn't come out, but it's very important in how these projects get laid out. That's something I didn't really understand until I was serving on the committee, that, you know, you have a 10-year SPOLOST or a five-year T-SPOLOST. You can't do them all the first, because the first year, because you haven't collected the money. So you schedule them out, but we call that tiering. So I would suggest that we have a nice hearty discussion on this. Maybe if it's at a work session, we want to put it last. And then if people have other things and have a lot of expertise, they could go on, but some of us could stay and make sure that we really understand this process before we get going on T-SPOLOST 2026.
Commissioner Thornton?
I'm going to go ahead, I, two things. This was not part of our CDO. We were at the Newton Bridge. We were number 12. So, but besides that, I am going to vote for this because it is dangerous over there. And like, but like Commissioner Johnson, they ain't going to start tomorrow. I have a problem with the whole T-SPOLOST, SPOLOST process. It looked like we layered stuff on. This has been on the list, what, this is 2020? What year is this, 2025?
The list right here.
2025. We do not, we do not question when we get behind in these projects. None of us. And I think that it goes back to what the community sees and what we're doing. But I'm going to support it, but the whole T-SPOLOST, SPOLOST, and you've heard me say this before the 2023. District 9 did not get a dime other than the bus extension out on 29. And we paid the same penny that the rest of y'all enjoy. And so I'm agreeing that we need to dissect this process. If it's not working, we need to change it. But I'm going to represent my, and this is in my district now. So I'm going to support it tonight, but we don't even need to go. And even now with T-SPOLOST, several people worked really hard to get that 8.7 million for District 9 in a bucket. They should not have had to work that hard. They should not have had to work that hard. But guess what? This is 20, we're getting ready to go into 2026. That was 2023. We haven't seen a dirt be dug, no holes nowhere. So we got money, and it is not getting to my constituents in District 9. So, yeah, we need to look at the process, and I am going to support this today, but this is the kind of stuff, when audiences come up here and they think that we haven't done nothing, or they think there's, somebody's doing something, but it ain't us. So I appreciate the transparency because some of this stuff is something wrong. So that's all I'm going to say. But this process needs to be revisited because if District 9 is not going to be a candidate for funding for 2026, I promise you, we will not be supporting 2026 T-SPOLOST. We got to do better, y'all.
Commissioner Taylor?
And again, for the sidewalk, for the children to get to Holland Park. I am not saying that I am against the sidewalk or safety measures for any pedestrian trying to get to and from where they need to be. What I am simply saying is that to have a closer look at the process is not a bad thing. The project completion is for spring of 2027. And, you know, I know with the ditches and the holes and the live screen replacement, pavement maintenance, traffic signal, signature replacement, bike and pedestrian projects, I understand all of the things that go into this work. What I'm simply asking is that, you know, we get a simpler process so that people can understand it. I want to see kids get to and from Vincent Drive. I drive Vincent Drive. I know people who have walked Vincent Drive. And, you know, they're going to be surprised that people even cared enough to even put sidewalks there in the first place because they have walked from Vincent Drive, Calfwood, Roland Ridge forever without a sidewalk, just a sidewalk to get to the gas station. And so when we speak on a higher level, I also speak for those people who, uh-uh, who walk it anyway. So I can vote either way. I'm not against what I second. I'm not against the CDO. I am simply giving my two cents.
Commissioner Johnson, and I'll return to you, Commissioner.
Just one last thing. I support it also. I'm just not a fan of kicking the can. I was making a motion to initiate some progress, and that's simply all I was saying. I know that neighborhood. I used to live over there as well. This is not me saying this does not need to happen.
Commissioner Thornton?
I guess my concern is, and, you know, maybe this is a light of a new day because before manager, which manager, Manager Williams left, he sent me documentation, he sent me a document document that showed that we have paid more for bike paths, walk paths, than infrastructure. Something's wrong with that. And I bring it, I still have it on my computer. So when we talk about the process, it doesn't seem to be no hardship on bike lanes and walk paths, okay? So I'm going to email that to you because I don't want nobody to think I'm exaggerating. Anybody in the audience that want it, I'll send it to you too. Because that's in black and white. And you know what he said when he gave it to me? You'll be surprised at this. No, I wasn't. He was surprised I asked for it.
Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, Mayor, so, you know, so we can go ahead and move along and take the vote. But I do, and I'm not putting this into a motion, but as you and I talked this weekend, I think we need, as soon as possible, we need to go ahead and take a look at our SPOLOs processes, how, where those dollars are, how long they've been there, and then figure out a simpler process that we can do. I mean, when I worked for the school district, we had three people doing our SPOLOs. We built two schools, but then three years. But three people, no, you know, like I said, we did the design, we did the build. So, I think it's important for all of us sitting around this rail, that we understand how the process works, where is the money, and then we can move these projects forward. Because I still don't understand how we had projects that we had not completed. And again, I think all of us need to know that. So, I'm just going on record saying, as soon as possible, either through a work session that we do this, maybe the whole work session would take, would be SPOLOs related, but for us to get an understanding about the process and where the money at.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Culpepper?
And I agree. I think we need to know, like, looking back at SPOLOs 2011, there's still $4.8 million available. And so, and then there's $1.3 million of earned interest. So, what are we doing with that? I mean, so we need to understand each, each SPOLOs, how much money's been spent, how much is available, the interest that we've earned on all that, on that money. And if we've completed the projects, let's roll it into another SPOLOs, or do something with it, or use that to, for the upkeep for those projects that were in that SPOLOs.
Thanks, everyone, for your input. Certainly had a lot of conversations over the years, and recently as well, with commissioners and members of the public and staff about all things SPOLOs, including the way that individual projects roll out. And I'd be very glad for us to host a work session, providing an overview, but with particular focus on how each individual project comes to be. Currently, for members of the public, commissioners recognize this. This body approves a concept plan. This body approves a schematic design, which has very specific engineered guidelines. And then this project goes to bid and award. So, we see each project at least three times, and that doesn't even include the prospect that we may have a hold for some specific amendments in the future, too. Certainly, other communities do it in a more attenuated way that doesn't take as long or necessarily cost as much money, because of course, each vote means we have to go out to some professionals, whether in-house or external to the organization, to get that work done. So, I'd be very glad to have that conversation, and I very much look forward to it. So, the substitute motion on the floor, from Commissioner Wright and seconded by Commissioner Fisher, is to approve A, B, C, and D, which includes those extra anticipated funds to do the complete job.
And E.
And E, thank you very much. And so, we're going to go ahead and do a roll call, A through E. There is an ordinance, so go ahead and go to the attorney.
Ordinance of the Transportation Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax 2018 Program Budget, so as to provide additional funding for Project Number 12 Pedestrian Improvement Program and for other purposes.
All right, so go ahead and do a roll call.
Wright?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
10 yes, 0 no.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, everybody. Look forward to the future discussion. All right, item 14 is, of course, our long gestating East Side Library Project, and this is the proposed schematic design phase of the process. I hear a motion for approval. So, we've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby. So, I'm taking notes, and a second from Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Hamby, any remarks?
No, ready to vote. Enough about, ready to vote.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I do, I do want to follow up on some of the questions that I asked at the Genna City meeting. And that was, you know, this is a project, people have asked about the traffic signal on Born at Shoals, and other people have asked also about the inclusion of solar panels. The roof is being built to specifications for solar readiness. But Mike, the questions were, when would we be looking into the traffic light and how to get across the street? And when would we use some of that 2000, SPOLOs 2020 renewable energy money for the solar panels there? And I got a nice prompt succinct reply back from the manager's office about how that will happen after the, at the next phase. Right now, we're at the schematic, the design, and then we'll get the more detailed project proposal where you'd be able to build from, right? The engineers will get in there and so forth, and we'll know where we need to be considering putting in a traffic light, and how many solar panels we would need for everything. So, that would be coming later on. And in fact, just to make sure we're all on the same page here, because a lot of people are following this one, was on SPOLOs 2011, didn't make it. But since SPOLOs 2020, we've approved the site, we're approving the schematic design. If all goes well with that, we will be putting in the bid in the construction, I believe, next, like, the end of the year, in December for that, a bid for the construction. With it opening then in something like 2027? Yeah, so, so we still have a while to go, and it's a long process. But just want to keep everyone informed of where we are. We're anxious for it on the east side.
Would anyone else like to speak to the motion?
Nope, ready to vote.
And there's no ordinance associated with this, correct? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries unanimously. All right, we're going to move to item 15. This is the resolution to address black and minority inequities. Entertained a motion from the body?
Motion to approve?
I second it.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Davenport, and a second from Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Davenport, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes. First, I would like to say that, and I know we're asking staff and each other a lot of work, but we do need to revisit our resolution coming for us. This, getting this resolution in its original form, you know, I welcomed it. I still welcome it. I think it's a, it's a great opportunity to show what we have done in our community. But unfortunately, just listening to some of the people in the audience, that it's caused a discontent. Just as a black person, I just, I can't believe we're in this spot right now. But at the same time, we, we as a government and as a body, have done a wealth of stuff for our community. I just remember two, five years ago, when there was literally just two black commissioners sitting here, and like, literally District 2 was just getting ransacked with development, and people getting pushed out, and nobody came and said anything. So, you know, over the course of the years, we've got the Lennet Town, we have designated 2.5, designated $5 million for, for housing assistance. We designated over $50 million for, for affordable housing. And yes, affordable, I mean, that's a, it's a question that we need to ask for ourselves. But I know a lot of family members who were homeless. I have a cousin, she was homeless, and she was able to find an apartment from the housing that was built in District 9. But, and I won't be going on the radio, because there's a lot more to unpack. Hopefully, Patty Lawson will have me, but I, I, we could do an ordinance if you guys are willing to work on it, but I think this is a great first step to, to go for. I'm very proud of the work that we have done. And there's still, and unfortunately, and should I say this? Unfortunately, there's, yeah, so there's still a lot more work that we need to do in our community, and I look forward to working with my colleagues to, to improve black lives and blue, improve all lives. And I hope this thing passes, and we can move forward to looking at ordinance or other ways we can improve our community.
Commissioner Myers, a second, or would you like to?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. First, I wanted to thank the Athens, the Human Relations Commission, who sent us an email today in support of this, but with more specific ideas about how to make it follow through. And I'd like to ask the manager and the mayor to see if, what in there that the Human Relations Commission could address. I know in the, I reviewed the, you know, the purpose of the Human Relations Commission, and part of it was to put together proposals and education. So, maybe we could see if there's some things in there that actually could give the Human Relations Commission some meaningful work on that. Second of all, I hate that this is creating conflict, because in fact, this resolution seems even more important right now to me than it did in December, when we received the initial draft from the Athens Anti-Discrimination Movement. Right now, on a national level, people are losing their jobs because they have words like diversity, marginalized community, equity, systematic changes, systemic changes in racial justice in their job descriptions, and they're losing their grants before, because of that. So, you know, grants to do health work, et cetera. So, I am glad we here locally are saying that this is something we're committed to. A resolution clearly is not an ordinance, it's not a budget allocation, it's not a policy proposal. It is a vision, and this one, it talks about what we've done and lays out some of the, a very long history that Commissioner Davenport referred to, and then basically says, hey, from here, we are recommitting to going forward on this. Yes, there need to be more, there needs to be more after this. There need to be resolutions, I mean, ordinances, and there need to be budget allocations. So, from this resolution, we can move forward and allocate another $4 million in next year's budget for affordable housing, and another $1 million for a strike fund to help lower-income residents stay in their homes. We could draft specific ordinances or policies to follow through on the recommendations of the disparity study. We could allocate general budget funds to help continue funding for some of the programs that have received funding through the ARPA for our youth. We could create an ACC policy that outlines strategies and steps to make sure that our boards are more diverse in who they are. Each of those could be ordinances or policy agenda items that we vote on. We cannot take what we have here right now and change the title and make this into an ordinance. This is a, the diving board into making more, taking more action as a commission. And I, and I hope we will do that as we move forward, or else the resolution won't have meant much.
Commissioner Thornton, speaking to the motion on the floor.
I'm going to be making a substitute motion. Oh, I can speak to it now. My colleagues voted and supported $400,000 for a housing study. What could we have done with $400,000 as far as housing was concerned? My colleagues did that, because I did not support it. We are anticipating in the circles that I'm talking to in now, an influx of people moving to Athens between 30,000 and 60,000 in the next five to 10 years. We're not prepared for that. The housing study, the only thing that, well, there was, even though the housing study I didn't agree with, there was one thing that came out clear. 8,800 homes would be needed to address low-income and to, and moderate-income families. These are facts, and nobody has taken up the mantle, except a few of us, trying to address these issues. I've, I've mentioned it time and time again when Ms. Barbara comes up here to speak, and we all go home, and like we didn't even hear her. Now, I'm going to make, my substitute motion is going to suggest that we move for ordinance. We're getting ready to go into budget season, so, but I'll say 60 days, but I know we're going into budget season. The, the authors, not support staff from the commission, but the authors and the concerned folk that brought this for us, I'm asking that there is a meeting with us. I did hear one person tell me they're never invited around the table, around the table. I got news for you, they don't invite me around the table either. I just show up. But there needs to be a conscious effort if this is going to be significant. And if we could table this for 60 days, and the authors of this resolution, with the help of our attorneys, give us something that we could live, live with. But I am very reluctant in doing a resolution, a resolution. I noticed tonight, several people mentioned James Baldwin in some of the things. But one thing that James Baldwin said that I remember, how can I believe what you say when I see what you do? So, that's my motion to table this for 60 days.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, the motion, substitute motion from Commissioner Thornton is to table for 60 days. There's a second from Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Taylor, a second, or would you like to speak? Any additional notions to the motion?
Yes, sir. I appreciate all of the hard work that everybody's done with this resolution, from the original creation of the resolution, to even some of the language being changed within the resolution. But as a born and raised and grown Athenian, we deserve better. We deserve better. Not, I'm, I'm not saying that this resolution, this resolution, it is a push towards what we deserve. A resolution, I wrote a resolution a few months ago about gun violence and about how we were going to help our youth. We've still had shootings since that resolution. That resonates so close to me that I don't even know how I'm sitting up here. And I know a lot of people might say, well, she make a lot of stuff personal. Well, when you are born and raised in a city that you see is changing without you, or without the people around you being included, not only included, but funded, properly funded, not $2 million here, not $3 million there, when we're spending $50 million somewhere else. We as black, homegrown Athenians, and if you feel offended that I keep saying homegrown, then maybe go home respectfully. It's personal to me, because I am raising five children that could potentially also be ousted in a place where they were born and raised in, because people feel like they know what's best for us. Now, this resolution is a great start, is a great piece of work. Everything that is in here is intentional to, to push the agenda for black and brown people to be included, not just included for a limited amount of time, or when we get some side funds, now we want to give you money, but always intentionally. And so, I, I, I'm big on impact. I, I want to see impact. I don't want this to just be another document that goes into a folder that says, oh, well, we passed it for y'all, but we're not seeing the fruits of what's been passed. And so, I second your motion. I, I mean, no disrespect to anybody who wrote it, who pushed for it, who showed up here tonight to speak on behalf of it. But we deserve teeth, we deserve weight behind what is expected for African-American citizens of Athens Clark County. I'm a fifth generation. My great-grandma was born here in 1912, and she died at 102. And so, I, I, it's in me. This is what you see that grows from the concrete of Athens Clark County. District 3 Commissioner Tiffany Taylor. I am the root, I am the fruit, and we deserve better. And so, within 60 days, if we can get together and make sure that, I know, I got, I know, we, we just need to get together and put some teeth behind it so that it can be enforced. And if anyone feels like what I'm saying is too much, then you're a part of the problem. I'm sorry. I'm not sorry, but I'm done.
Would anyone else like to speak to the substitute motion at this point?
I would. Commissioner Culpepper?
Is there a way, in conjunction with the 60 days, look at turning it to LRC to start looking at an ordinance, to really put some teeth in it? So, I mean, I don't want to hold off on the, the 60 days, but also, we want to put some teeth in it, we need to go, have to go.
Just if you're asking me as sort of chair and, and assignment creator, Commissioner Culpepper, I would note that the majority of the prospective action items are funding items. There certainly are some ordinance or some protocols in, in some areas. Obviously, some are underway already, already within government operations. We're looking at our contracting and procurement, so that's already in process. But, but the bulk of these things are things that we would have to allocate dollars to. And obviously, we're going into funding season, and so, as I see the clearest path forward for most of those bullet point items, it's how many dollars are we going to put behind these? Commissioner Link?
So, if, if an ordinance were to come of this, it would, it would be multiple ordinance. So, if an ordinance were to come of this, it would be multiple ordinances scattered throughout our code. The way I see this is, A, it's kind of a history of what we've done over the past 10 years or so, or even going before that, to get us to where we are here, and then direction, moving forward to continue the work, and to develop those ordinances and those policies and those funding allocations that carry out this resolution. That's how resolutions typically work, they're directional. If this, if this were to be assigned to a commission committee, I mean, A, you don't have the participation necessarily of the people whom it impacts, which, you know, part of this resolution directs that. We need to do better. We need to do better with bringing in people of color into our policymaking process, and this resolution states that. We did get input from our Human Relations Commission, and I would love to see this resolution move forward to that committee to help develop policy and ordinance proposals coming out of this resolution to direct us, you know, as to what we need to pursue. And there's a lot of despair in this community, and I've seen it coming for years, and it has to do with our Black neighborhoods being wiped out by student gentrification. And, you know, I've been screaming about this for years, and I've been told, the future land use plan, that's the time to change our zoning, future land use plan. Well, the future land use plan is happening now. We're going to get recommendations any day now from a committee. And we need to grapple with the fact that those neighborhoods have been targeted for student gentrification, and we need to change our zoning to untarget them. I mean, the damage is already done, but maybe we need to enforce our single-family housing ordinance in those neighborhoods to assure that students can't take them over. What I don't see is UGA doing anything to solve the problem. They're creating a problem, and, you know, they're an entity that pulls in about a quarter billion, B billion dollars a year in donations, in foundation donations. I got, in my inbox at UGA just the other day, I got a message from the president touting all the wonderful things they do, and, you know, all the grants they get, and the science work they do, and the research. None of it said anything to do about what they do for this community. So UGA was built by Black people. It was built by enslaved Black people, and they pushed out Linen Town residents, and Linen Town is happening over and over and over again by a thousand cuts right now to our Black community, and we need for UGA to get involved and pay up.
Time's expired, so I'm going to move on. First to Commissioner Thornton, Davenport, and Myers.
I have really tried to be patient. I really have, and I thought I did a good job until we got to the University of Georgia and Black people. I remember when a group of Black elderly people came here and begged you, begged us not to allow a development in their neighborhood on Nottingham. I remember that, Black folk. I remember certain commissioners explaining why it would be better for that neighborhood. I remember when Linen Town became an issue. I remember a commissioner who didn't support it. I remember when District Two did not have representation after a commissioner left, and certain group of folk moved that they did not have representation for six months. That's what I meant, and I didn't want to go there, and I'm, again, I ain't calling no names. That's what I meant when I said, how can I believe what you say when I watch what you do? Now, don't nod your head because I'm trying not to call your name, Alyssa, but, but don't do that. I mean, if you want the resolution, fine, vote for the resolution, but please don't play on our hearts. That's what Black people are tired of. Y'all act like we are just so dumb, we can't even think for ourselves. You can't speak for Black folk. You ain't been there, and I'm trying to be polite and cordial. But then when you go all down the memory lane of da-da-da-da and how you done da-da-da-da, look at your votes. That's what you go by. Now, that's my motion to, my substitute motion. I see Patrick, I'll stop Patrick. Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor, and commissioners, just focus your comments on the motion on the floor, which is to hold for 60 days. So Commissioner Davenport?
I'm just going to advise the chair to, you know, keep the quorum so it can get through, get through today. Yeah.
Let's vote.
Let's vote.
Commissioner Myers, and then Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, just on the substitute motion, it's not, I just want clarification on what it is to.
So the substitute motion is to hold for 60 days.
And then bring back, not bring back this resolution, bring back something else.
So the hold is for 60 days. My read of that is the anticipation is that there may be some modified language 60 days.
That leads to a recommendation for ordinance that could lead to, because I would like for the commission to get an update report on PSCOT. I would like an update report on HRC. I would like a report on the disparity study. I would like a report on the funds that Jacobs receives from minority hiring, and I want to know what happened to the funds that were in the original Black Lives Matter of 2020. And I also would like to know more about Title VI, and I also would like to know what happened to the minority business coordinator that was a few years ago. That's the kind of stuff. We, everybody spoke tonight, it hurt me to my heart because they spoke with such passion, but they do not know what has been going on behind closed doors. We need this information if we're going to do something that's going to be sustainable. We got all of this stuff here, what, and we don't get no reports.
And so Commissioner Thornton, just in terms of, kind of responding to the query from Commissioner Myers, definitely what I'd recommend is, should the substitute motion pass, to, you know, kind of enumerate those interests in future action, probably the email for the body so we could, we could move forward. Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, and that's my point also. I mean, is 60 days enough? I mean, are we going, I don't want us to sit on this thing. I mean, you know, if we're going to take action, we need to take action. Commissioner Thornton is asking for a lot of things. Can we get those things done in 60 days? Where is it going to end up, and what can we come to the table with that we think is viable, is going to pass, and to Melissa, Commissioner Link's point, are we going to be able to put money behind it? Because if we just going to put those something together, it's not going to mean anything, then we wasting our time. So I don't, if 60 days is the normal, then we got work to do. I don't want us to wait around trying to figure out, you know, who's going to do, who's going to do this, who's going to do that, and if we're going to bring people to the table, how do we get them to the table? So that, that's just my concern.
Commissioner Myers, last opportunity.
Yeah, I hadn't really finished.
Apologize.
I'm totally, I don't want to stick there. All I wanted to say was, I am supportive of all those requests that Commissioner Thornton asked for, and a lot of things were brought up. I think that's something different than this resolution, and changing that to be this is two different things. So I would be supportive of that, I would be supportive of getting that information, I'd be supportive of putting together ordinances and budget allocations as I outlined in my comments, but I think if we're going to either support this resolution, we need to support it now, and then move on and get the hard work done, and follow up. So those are just my final questions.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote on the substitute motion. We'll do a round robin, and then we'll return to the, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote, Commissioner, and then we're going to go ahead and move on. We'll go ahead and begin with the round robin with Commissioner Thornton.
Thornton?
What am I?
This on the substitute motion.
Yes, yes, yes.
Handy?
Yes.
Davenport?
No.
Link?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes, yes.
Johnson?
Epstein, I wasn't able to say what I wanted to say.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Six yes and three no.
All right, so motion is told for 60 days, so we will see this again in two cycles. Item 16 is the, kind of a long underdevelopment intergovernmental agreement related to establishing the partnership for development of the arena district and parking needs for the Classic Center periphery. Appreciate all the commissioners who contributed positively to this. I think it's in a better place than where it began. It has kind of more meat on the bones and more detail, and want to thank the Attorney's Office who provided a lot of that support as well. So entertain a motion from a member of the body.
So moved. Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Wright for approval, and a second from Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Wright, any remarks regarding this?
I had some remarks for earlier, but my brain has lost some track of some of that, so I'm ready to vote.
Okay, Commissioner Myers.
Yeah, I do have some remarks, only because it's relevant for the other vote that we're having afterwards. This is actually a really big deal with a lot of money will be involved in what we're doing right now. This is the development of a arena district partnership, and this is with a new steering committee that'll have two members of the commission, two members of the Classic Center Authority, two members of the Downtown Development Authority and the mayor, and they will be working with a development expert to, I forget the phrase in here, I'm a little distracted here, but anyway, to hire someone who has expertise in the area to do the kind of development around the Classic Center that has been talked about since I came on the commission. And so it's a different entity that's going to be doing that with more input from the mayor and commission on that board that does that. This is really important. I saw some things out in social media about, like, oh, this is great, this is for the long-term future of Athens. It's not, it's also for the short-term future of Athens, because that $150 million that talked about before is a loan. It's a loan that the Classic Center got to build the arena, which is a normal kind of thing to do, and now there's a, there's a pro forma, I believe that's the right phrase, that explains how it's paid back. There's money to pay it back from the Classic Center Authority, has a plan for the next two years, more or less, but after that, it depends on development, sort of revenue that comes in from future development. And so we need to get moving on this fast, and this is something that we all need to keep an eye on because it's not the end of, this is a familiar theme, it's not the end of a process, but it's the beginning of a new one that we're voting on here. And we will, so we're really actually taking a lot of the authority from the Classic Center that they've been having, and with the development and with the money, with a lot of money involved, and we're moving it over to this new entity, if I have that correct, and please correct me, attorney, if I don't have that correct. So we're moving a lot of the power over to this new entity that we're voting on right now. And so I think it's.
Subject to approval, this is the issue.
Yes, subject, yes, oh, yes, yeah, and it's subject to approval, that's right. And thank you for putting those wording, that wording in there, some of the things I asked about were added to the intergovernmental agreement that made it clear that a lot of the bigger decisions will come back here for the approval. So anyway, I am supportive of this. This is actually a very big item of business that we're conducting tonight here, making a big decision about what's going forward in the Classic City, the arena district.
Anyone else like to speak to the motion? Commissioner Culpepper?
Yes, I am in support of this, you know, what Commissioner Myers was talking about with, the Classic Center has the funding to pay for the bonds for the first couple of years, and then we've got to figure out what, what's going to happen after that, and that's, I think is vital, that we engage in experts who are experts in parking, experts in developing entertainment districts, and getting input from stakeholders, local businesses, universities, hotels, and constituents, and citizens of downtown for the parking and the development. I think this will be a vital part, this will be a successful project.
Commissioner Davenport?
Yes, so I'm going to be the weird one again, deny this one. So my, and I get, because, sorry, because we, there's, I believe, $6 million on the line that's not truly, not understood how it's going to get paid for, but when it comes to expertise, what would be, if you go through the facts, not the facts initially, if you go through the history of, if you go through the history of this, of this agenda item, everything seems to be going good, you know, there were some hiccups, but it was only on agenda, not agenda item, but item number 57 where things just stopped. On July 17, 2024, the CCA advised, ACC GOV, that the Classic Center Authority and the Master Developer had entered into a joint termination of their development agreement. So, and we had this conversation in the open last July, August, or last fall, and we just not, haven't heard anything, an update, so why are we not giving them that opportunity to say, okay, well, this termination didn't work out? We heard the CCA say they're working on finding a new developer, so why can't we just do that instead of creating something new, you know, creating something new out off the cuff so quickly that I just, you know, I just, you know, someone going to, going to have to, you know, I'm slow, just explaining it to me, as to why not, why create another authority when authority, you know, anytime you have development, you're going to have some issues, you're going to have some hiccups. Why create another authority to manage the situation, and why not just give them time to fix the problems they have?
Commissioner, as at least one of the several authors of this, what I would identify is that coming out of last year's dissolution of the development agreement between the private sector developer and the Classic Center Authority, you know, many of the critics of the process noted that there probably were not enough stakeholders around the table, and that the Classic Center Authority may have been overburdened with responsibility to have to be a facility operator as well as effectively a commercial real estate developer, and this provides us the opportunity to have, you know, what in this document is termed the development facilitator, who would be effectively a commercial real estate professional, who could ensure that we get another developer or array of developers, certainly as we've learned from a lot of other projects around the country. Oftentimes, you have a development plan, and I think as you just noted, that development plan may not come out of the ground exactly as initially conceived, but this is a chance for us to have some DDA members who, of course, have a stake in the financial future of downtown, Classic Center Authority members who, of course, have done a great job nurturing the arena to fruition, and county commissioners who, of course, have a stake in ensuring that, as you identified, that $6 million indebtedness that's due on an annual basis can be repaid. So just puts more heads around the table, ensures that the Classic Center continue to do a great job operating the facility, and then gets us that commercial real estate professional who can be, you know, effectively the real estate headhunter out there, getting development to happen that's going to repay those bonds. So I know you wanted to kind of follow up on a question of that, but I wanted to turn to Commissioner Taylor and Link first.
I just want to make sure that the salary that's going to be paid by this facilitator comes out the 30% of the TAD, if, because I know, I know that the TAD is a funding stream of three or maybe four, but I just want to make sure it's on record. If the TAD comes up, that they use their 30% and leave our 70% to us.
Yeah, and Commissioner Taylor, I think that's, you know, a wonderful observation, and certainly, should TAD dollars be used for the development facilitator, which isn't even a certainty at this point, those would come from the 30% west of the river.
Thank you, sir.
Right, Commissioner Link?
Yeah, I mean, as y'all know, I was a skeptic of the arena project in the beginning, but, you know, once it was voted on and it was a done deal, you know, I'm committed, we need to make sure this is done right, and, you know, it's been, it's a big project, and it's been kind of boondagli here and there, and, you know, from, often from forces outside of anyone's control. You know, I think much of the public doesn't realize that that arena is only able to exist because we are effectively giving away acres and acres of what was public property to the Classic Center Authority to lease, to private developers to pay back these bonds. So I think it's necessary that we have that transparency with, you know, commissioners on that committee and the DDA, because the Downtown Development Authority most definitely has an interest in the operations there and the overall success of downtown. You know, I am wishing for the most success. I went to my first hockey game the other day, and it was so much fun. You know, we need to make sure this project is a smashing success, and those tax dollars come in, those TAD dollars come in, and that 70% goes to East Athens.
Commissioner Wright?
Yeah, I wanted to help Commissioner Davenport because he did, he did ask for a little help. I did want to say.
I did want to say time is of the essence. That's apparent. And you and I are both assigned, thank you, Mr. Mayor, to the bond oversight committee that we established to help us be a little bit more involved. You know, we only met twice. And this dissolves that. And many times when we were there, we had questions that were outside of just the bond. So this steering committee is helpful with those three entities. Commissioner Link, thank you for mentioning the Downtown Development Authority because this is bigger than just, this is big enough for it to be a downtown production. More stakeholders, as has been outlined. And time is of the essence in many ways and for many of the details, Patrick, I mean, Commissioner Davenport, that we've talked about.
All right, got a motion and a second on the floor. We'll do a round robin, beginning with Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
No.
Link?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Nine yes, one no.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk, I appreciate that. All right, motion carries nine to one. And I'll go ahead and confer with staff and send out an email this week, kind of letting you know how we'll begin that and naming members of the body. We do have some items for new business, so I do need a motion for suspension of rules. Do I hear such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Commissioner Hamby. I think second was from Commissioner Wright. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none. Item 17 is the Victim of Crimes Act grant. And this is an application that the Solicitor's Office has to get in on a deadline. Do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Hamby. I've got a second from Commissioner Taylor. And Attorney Drake, if you could read that ordinance?
And capital budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding from the Prosecuting Attorneys Council of Georgia for continuation of one full-time position and associated expenses to support assistance to crime victims and for other purposes.
Commissioner Hamby, any words to the motion? Commissioner Taylor?
This is going to be able to do great work. Rate it a vote.
Anyone else like to speak to the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, item eight, item 18 is a task for which we need a responsible party within the administrative apparatus of the government. And so this is a resolution appointing Brad Griffin as an authorized representative for the Series 2022 and Series 2023 Classic Center Arena Project Bond.
Make a motion to approve Bradley Griffin. Bradley Griffin.
Bradley Griffin.
Bradley.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby. You don't have to dig it in. Motion from Commissioner Hamby, who's the second?
Second.
All right, I've got a second from Commissioner Wright.
Bradley.
Commissioner Hamby, any remarks?
No, it's gonna be Bradley from here on out.
Commissioner Wright?
That's it. Rate a vote, rate a vote.
Commissioner Davenport had a question.
I'll tell you what to call him, Brad.
We're gonna have to revisit this in August, right? Where it's.
Yeah, certainly when we get a permanent manager, as Brad has made it clear, he is the interim manager, then we would have to revisit this and name a new person who's the responsible party. This is correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, motion carries. Item 19 is a resolution to request that the General Assembly amend the local act creating the Classic Center Authority of Clark County during the 2025 session in order to add two members of the county commission to serve on the Classic Center Authority. So would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion from Commissioner Culpepper. And a second from Commissioner Wright. Commissioner Culpepper, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, I think this is a long time coming. You know, we look at the other authorities that the county has, and then you look at, and they all have commissioner representation. And you look at the financial liability that the authority has, $108 million in bonds. And I think it's, it would be helpful for to have the commissioner, a couple of commissioners on that authority. So there's transparency on what's going on and with the payments. You know, I don't know if people realize, but the Classic Center Authority gets, so we get set, there's seven cents of hotel motel tax. The Classic Center Authority gets six of those seven cents. So last year, that was $3.1 million. So I think it's fair to our taxpayers, we owe it to them, to have, for us to have a voice on that authority.
Commissioner Wright?
I appreciate this coming forward as well as the other new business and not delaying it again. I think time is of the essence, too. It's, this was done in 1988, and I guess amended in 89. Eighty-eight was a great year, great year. And I just think that updating it, I think that when we started learning things as fast as we could last year about what was going on, that this will help this entity be able to share with each other what's going on instead of us having to try to get caught up at the last minute.
Commissioner Johnson? No, okay. Commissioner Hamby?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate, appreciate you letting me speak here. And I am supportive of this, but I want to explain why I'm supportive of it. You know, and it's not, it's, the Classic Center has been a huge benefit to our community. It's been a huge benefit to downtown, there's no doubt about it. There's no doubt about the great work that the director's done in bringing business to that facility. It adds to our community. And I just, you know, I just think the time, the time, and based on what our other authorities are doing, is kind of, kind of relevant at this point in time. This authority does get quite a bit of money from this government. We, you know, I think somebody was using the word risk averse. If commissioners were to be on this authority, I would argue differently. I mean, I don't think this commission has been risk averse in doing what the authorities asked us to do in order to help build the arena, in order to help, you know, it's been on this, ever since I've been on the commission, there's been some sort of Classic Center project on those SPOS ballots. We've been risk averse. I mean, I think Commissioner Myers was on one of the SPOS committees where we said, hey, we're gonna fund this, so, and you remember that?
Yes, sir.
So, so we took the risk of going against a citizens committee to make sure that the Classic Center had the funds to keep developing the way that is beneficial to this community. And I would also argue, too, that there's not, you know, the mayor and I serve on the Downtown Development Authority. There's not, there's not a whole lot of self-interest that comes into play there. What the interest that comes into play, from what I've seen out of the mayor and others that are on the, that I've served with on the Downtown Development Authority who've been elected, is that they want to do what's best for downtown and for the community. And I see that also on the, I'm on the Economic Development Authority. There's a commissioner appointed to that. You know, we issue, I mean, I think there's about over a billion dollars worth of bonds that we've issued since, since, I'm not saying I did it, but there's a billion dollars of bonds out there that we've issued for private businesses to be able to come and do business here, here in the community. So, and on the pension board. So the pension board has almost $300 million. We have a meeting in the morning at the pension board, I just remembered, at nine o'clock. So, so, so we look at that, but I think it's helpful. I found it on the pension board, the industrial development board, and the authorities that y'all serve on as well. I mean, Patrick's on the solid waste authority. You come, you don't go on these authorities as a self-interest part. You go on there to figure out what you can do to help. You know, Kelly, Mayor and I both have come back and said, hey, the Downtown Development Authority would like to build a park, or we want to partner with y'all on doing something. So we try to find ways to advocate for that authority. So there's no, there's not really a conflict that comes up. You know, on the pension board, y'all have been very helpful when I've come and asked for raises for the retirees. And may come back to you this next budget time to ask for some things. So you see where I'm going with this. I think, I think at the end of the day, I think it would be very helpful and very helpful for the organization and very helpful for the community. Thank you for the extra time.
Thanks, Commissioner. Turn to Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, and I would not be supporting this particular resolution. I think with the IGA that we have already put in place, I think it's sort of the establishment of what we can do moving forward. So I don't, I feel like it's a duplication. We got, we got an IGA agreement, we're putting it into place. We're gonna have two commissioners that's gonna be a part of that IGA. Two people from the Downtown Authority, two people from the Classic City Authority. So I think we're gonna have oversight. So I don't see why we need to go to the legislators, you know, to get this implemented permanently. So I would not be supporting this particular resolution moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Link?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to have some representation from this body on that body. I mean, yeah, the Classic Center Authority was created in 1988. That was the year I graduated from high school. And I moved to Athens in 1993, like as the Classic Center was rising from the rubble. So, yeah, it's been a long time and it has grown tremendously. It's huge, and it's about to become the entire east end of downtown. So I, my question is, why two? Why expand the authority? You know, how did we come up with those numbers? Most of these other authorities, except for the Downtown Development Authority, have just one commissioner on it. I do understand the position of the Classic Center Authority with the concept of getting it over politicized or, you know, the sponsorship and the conflicts of interest that could arise with that role with elected officials being, you know, you know, a fairly significant voice on such a body. So I'm just wondering, you know, why not just one commissioner on the body, one out of seven or one out of five? You know, I do think it is crucial to have at least one, but I'm just wondering why we came up with the two, the figure of two.
That was certainly the proposal that Commissioner Culpepper worked with the Attorney's Office to draft. Certainly, if you'd like to make a substitute motion to recommend one, that is an option for you.
I kind of would. I think I would like to make a substitute motion for just one commissioner on a seven-person body.
Then you did, there's five now.
There's five now.
So you'd have to.
Yeah, this calls for a seven-person body with two commissioners, correct?
Well, if you added one commissioner, you'd have six.
Yeah, but I'm saying add two, add two, two members. So there'd be another member that would be selected by, and one commissioner that would be appointed by the mayor. Because I do think the body should be expanded, considering the, you know, the growth of the center and the programming expansion.
What's your motion?
My motion is to, to create, to add one commissioner to the Classic Center Authority body plus an additional member who would go through the regular selection process.
So. I'll second that.
All right, so there's substitute motion from Commissioner Link. Second for that substitute motion from Commissioner Hamby. Commissioner Davenport has asked to be recognized, and Commissioner Myers, so I want to get both of them. Commissioner Davenport?
So I get where we're going with this, and I know we just approved the former IGA, but we do select individuals to be on this board. You know, we go through this process at least twice, twice a year, maybe? And we do so because we don't want to politicize this board. And there will be some conflict of interest. And plus, you know, commissioner, we're already taxed as much as, you know, already taxed as it is. But it's just kind of redundant. But, you know, I don't see why we need to add two additional commissioners to a board that we clearly select five members to be on in the first place. But, because we want that independent thought outside of our worldview. But that's just my thinking.
Commissioner Myers?
Yeah, I'm not in support of this. We, I sort of agree with Commissioner Fisher there that this is redundant. I mean, this all, as Commissioner Davenport brought up, things were moving along until August, and then things fell apart. At that point, we decided we were gonna have that bond, maybe that was in that, that bond committee, oversight committee. We're dissolving that. And because we have this other new committee that we just approved. And in fact, more of the financial risk is going to be overseen by this new committee. And we've really taken away a lot of the power to do riskier financial moves from the Classic Center Authority. So I don't understand a need, there seems to be a redundancy here. And for the record, you know, if we're concerned about authorities not having commissioners on, maybe, maybe you also want to add a commissioner to the Housing Authority and the Airport Authority, too, that don't have them. So I don't, I don't actually mean for you to do that. But I'm saying there's also precedent here that there are other authorities. Well, you could, but not tonight, okay? But I'm saying that there are other authorities that do not have commissioners on them as well.
All right, so the substitute motion on the floor is to request of the General Assembly a seven-member body with one additional resident and one county commissioner. And that was placed on the floor by Commissioner Link and seconded by Commissioner Hamby. So we'll do a vote, beginning with Commissioner Link.
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Fisher?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Thornton?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
No.
Seven yes, three no.
All right, so motion carries seven to three. All right. Just, I'm gonna modify the agenda very slightly, we're gonna do everything. I'm gonna take resident input in just a minute, but I want to go ahead and bring my report forward first because I know Commissioner Hamby has to depart. The first item of my report is confirmation of the appointment of Commissioner Wright to the Industrial Development Authority. We do have two development authorities, one's a statutory authority and one's a constitutional authority. And so that, that recommendation needs confirmation by the body. So I'd entertain a motion to approve Commissioner Wright.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Hamby, second from Commissioner Fisher. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Furthermore, just want to enter into the record the names that I read at the agenda-setting meeting as members of the T-SPOS Resident Committee. I don't have those in front of me, my computer died in the midst of this meeting. But you heard those at the agenda-setting meeting. So I just want to formally enter those into the record and then also enter into the record that Commissioner Myers will serve as our liaison to the Advantage Behavioral Board. Thank you all for that.
Excuse me, Mayor. Would you mind emailing this list of the T-SPOS?
I will do that, absolutely. Be glad to. Want to go ahead and get resident input from residents on any item not on tonight's agenda? And terms of that input are the same as discussed before, a three-minute opportunity. The light will turn green when you begin speaking, yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and red when your three minutes is up. And I'll thank you for your time. So, good evening.
Good evening. This is a marathon. So, we're gonna switch subjects. My name is Laura Iyer, I'm at 1031 Holly Berry Lane. And I'm a director of a local nonprofit called Southern Sustainability Institute. And this local nonprofit has a vision of a resilient world where communities thrive through environmental stewardship, economic vitality, and social equity. And we strongly believe that the journey begins right here in our own backyard. So that's what we do. So today, first of all, I want to express a lot of gratitude to Athens Clark and this commission and the mayor for the gift of the Clean and Renewable Energy Plan. And this is a visionary roadmap adopted in August 2022. And the plan builds on a foundation that was laid by the 100% Clean and Renewable Energy Resolution, signed on May 21, 2019. And that time was during a time when we had a similar stance, a similar federal administration as we do at this very moment. And through that time, Athens has emerged as a beacon for other communities. And we are truly, truly fortunate to have such a forward-thinking document lighting our way. So at this time, I feel like a board has been knocked on my head and I'm trying to get my bearings. But, but this is helping me a lot because as our federal government is distancing itself from critical conversations about climate change and equity, scrubbing key language for national discourse, the need for bold local action has never been more urgent. And this retreat at the federal level only underscores the importance of the commitments we have made at home. So, that said, we must revive and continue the amazing work that's been done on the Clean and Renewable Energy Plan and continue to live by its contents. So tonight, my request, and a great first step, is to establish a clean energy task force as it was laid out in this document, composed of community members dedicated to identifying ongoing opportunities and ensuring accountability for these goals. This task force can also lead vital community outreach and education initiatives to inform residents about energy-saving strategies and ultimately saving money and contribute to our shared sustainability. And this is especially important now with a certain raising of energy costs. Athens, once again, has. raising of energy costs. Athens once again has this opportunity to set precedent. Let us seize the moment to reaffirm our commitment for clean and equitable energy, sustainable development, and a brighter future. Thank you for everything you do, and thank you for my, letting me make my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Iyer. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Tatiana Nino. I live at 131 Wendy Lane, and I'm also here to ask you to advance a local Clean and Renewable Energy Plan. I know that Athens Clark has made commitments to clean energy and sustainability in the past, which I do greatly appreciate, so I'm just here to ask you to continue to keep those commitments going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Valerie Aldrich, and I'm a retired, uh, Clark County schoolteacher. And I appreciate the time to speak to you about several issues. After hearing everybody tonight, I remember that many years ago, when this crisis with affordable housing was so in front of us, was when the only, I think, remaining mobile home park in Athens, on North Athens, uh, the land was sold from underneath them for a hotel and liquor store. And I think it was called Garden Hills, I can't remember the name, but many of their mobile homes were not, they were so old that they were not to code, to move them. So they lost them, but the mayor and commission and the city all opened their homes, people moved in with them. It was a, a wonderful experience. And at that time, Skippers Type Must and a group wrote grants, raised money to buy land so that they could have a mobile home park where people could put their mobile homes, and the land would never be sold from underneath them. And I believe the land was bought at Fourth Street and the bypass. Now, I'm not sure what happened, but I do recall, by the time this got underway, most of those people had found other places to live, you know, in other counties, homes, whatever. But really, affordable housing is mobile homes for a lot of people. So I'd like to know what happened to that land, and maybe there could be something established, uh, for mobile home parks like that, um, similar to what the Land Trust and Habitat is doing for affordable housing, just a thought. Um, and the other thing I'm here to talk about is, I'm here on behalf of the Local Sea Change, uh, Chapter, and our group is nationwide, and we meet with people across the country, and we're the group from Athens where we meet people's homes, we go talk to organizations, and just have conversations about what climate change is, what it means for our community, and advocate for the use of clean and renewable resources to help protect the health of all people in our community, and to grow our local economy and, yes, jobs through green energy transition at all levels, which is in that book she was holding. So I, I hope we proceed further with that. Um, as you've heard, this year, the feds are scrubbing the word "climate change" and funds for aiding the development and use of renewable resources. Because of this, more local action is needed. Our country, our state, and our city has made great strides in promoting and using alternative sources of energy. The bipartisan government bill last year in Congress provided grants to states encouraging using alternative sources of energy. Our Sustainable Office under Mike Wharton wrote a grant to receive money to install EV charging stations at the JL Sheriff and Tag Office, as well as solar panels to reduce the cost of electricity at these facilities.
Thank you, Ms. Aldrich. I appreciate you coming out tonight, and I can connect with you to give you the history about that property you asked about.
Okay, thank you very much. I've worked with a lot of you. You work very hard.
Good evening.
Hi, uh, my name is Ramsey Nix, and I live at 270 Normal Avenue. Um, I'm also here on behalf of Sea Change Conversations. We try to help people across the political spectrum understand why they should care about climate change. Um, thank you all for your wonderful service to our wonderful community. Thank you. And I'm, I'm here today to urge you to move forward with the Clean and Renewable Energy Plan that you adopted in 2019. Um, I would urge you to create a task force to, um, give some energy to that plan. Um, there are so many brilliant people here in, in this county who can help, um, uh, put this plan into action, um, and to ensure that our government operations meet their goal of a hundred percent clean energy by 2035. Georgia is leading the nation in clean energy jobs and private investment. Since the Inflation Reduction Act passed in August 2022, more than forty-three thousand new jobs in the clean energy sector have been created and planned in Georgia, the most of any state in the nation. More than thirty-one billion in investments are flowing into clean energy projects. Even if you take climate change completely out of this equation and this conversation, now would be a terrible time to hit the brakes on the clean, clean energy transition that is well underway. Renewable energy sources are cheaper than fossil fuels, and the cost of renewables just keeps on dropping. Do not let the government-subsidized fossil fuel industry tell you any other way. Research has demonstrated again and again that clean energy options boost our national and local economies, create good-paying American jobs, strengthen our nation's energy independence, and lower costs to save working families money regardless of political party. Let's lead on this. Let's continue moving forward with our Clean and Renewable Energy Plan. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Nix.
Mm-hmm.
Good job. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brian Gomez. I live at 490 Barnett Shoals Road, and I'm one of the new recent T-SAC, so T-SPOS Advisory Committee 2026 appointees, and so Commissioner Thornton, your comments earlier are well-taken. Um, and so I will make a note to emphasize the need to make sure that everyone in Athens gets their fair share of the portion, and I'm interested in the report you talked about earlier, and certainly if any of you all want to talk with me and share your perspectives, I'm, I'm open to listening. As you all reconsider what the T-SPOS process might look like, I just want to highlight this. There was a large emphasis tonight on the need for committees and boards and authorities to look like Athens. The way that T-SAC is currently set up is not really enabling that to happen. This, you know, upcoming cycle, we're meeting Mondays from 5:30 to 8:30 for about the next twenty weeks. That selects for a very particular person, and it forces out people who have childcare responsibilities, who cannot predictably commit to a service for twenty weeks at a time. It selects out for people who work untraditional, not nine-to-five jobs, who have evening and afternoon shifts. It kind of forces out your working-class Athenian from serving in that role. It's a really big burden. I'm honored to do it, but I have a lot of privilege in being able to take on that, that commitment. And so as you all consider how we can make our committees look more diverse, look more like Athens, and have voices not like mine, voices from people who have actually lived here their entire lives, um, just consider what you're asking of your citizens. Um, certainly, it is a lot of work. It's important work. It does demand time, but working-class citizens cannot afford to take three hours out every Monday for months and months at a time. And so just wanted to highlight that as you all consider what, um, a T-SAC process might look like moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Good evening.
I'm assuming it's me?
It's you.
Oh, okay, good. That would've been awfully if I spoke out of turn. Uh, Mayor, could I indulge you? Could you let me know, I'm assuming we're still using the green, red, and?
Yeah, absolutely.
Can you let me know when it's to yellow?
I'll, I'll let you know when it's yellow.
Awesome. So, my name is Garrick Scott. I have the pleasure of serving as Executive Director of Multiple Choices Center for Independent Living. That is a center that not only serves the citizens here in the Clark, Athens Clark County area, but it surrounds another nine counties. We just recently, we're excited to move into a new location. Now, I'm new to this area. I took the job to move out here, so I'm gonna tell y'all our, our address, but I don't know that I can necessarily help you know where it is. It's 125 Athens West Parkway. It's right off of Mental Bridge Road, and my staff, which is majority-lated, said, "Tell him it's next to the Kato's." So, I don't know, but I know it's behind the Grooms Transportation Office, but I'll point that out, because we share a building with Georgia Vocational Rehabilitation Agency. And they serve the same county, this, they're, they're the region for voc rehab. If you all don't know, they support individuals with all disabilities, just like we do, and find employment or live in the life that they want to live. That's great. The bad part is, there's no sidewalk in that area. Now, I'm, I've investigated there a couple of options. One, Clark County could put a sidewalk there, and that would help individuals get to our location so they can lead the life they want and seek employment. It's absolutely too dangerous for anyone in a wheelchair, or someone who's blind, or anyone, period, to walk, that's, walk in the road to get to our location. We're mandated to have pedestrian-friendly areas where we're located, and currently, we don't. The other option would be to move the bus stop to right in front of our building. I was told by the Athens Transit Authority that that's not an option, simply because there isn't enough traffic in that area to warrant so. There isn't enough traffic in that area simply because there isn't any sidewalk to encourage people to come to our location. So it's like a, pardon my French, damned if you do and damned if you don't situation. I would encourage you all to take a look at this area in the pedestrian area, just like you did Vincent Street, which I'm not familiar with, but I'm excited to know that there's gonna be a sidewalk there to encourage people to enjoy the parking, because of their soccer matches. But I would also like for you to encourage or include the disability community in finding a pedestrian-friendly area. I heard a lot of diversity groups mention this, this evening, but not once did I hear anybody include the disability community. I would hope that this would be a spark for change, and that we would allow everybody to have an opportunity for employment, for social interaction, and to live the life they want. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Good job with fifteen seconds remaining. Good evening.
Um, good evening, Dylan Woolsey, 505 Riverbend Parkway. Um, a lot has been, uh, talked about today about, you know, the needs for, you know, actions over just words. Um, especially, I'm gonna talk a little bit about an issue that really concerns us, because there actually has been a lot of words have been in discussion and talking about this by a lot of action that has not happened. So, the Pine Woods Library and Community Center, um, is a public library owned by the government here in Athens that has been without consistent water for over a year. Um, it's a public institution. Having water without a year is completely unacceptable. Um, it provides many issues, I'm sorry, provides many services to many different people in this community. Um, and being out wa, being without water means they have to close many times throughout the year, and many times throughout the week, which, um, causes a whole, many of its services. We would not find this acceptable if, you know, the one on Baxter Street had to be closed for half the year, pausing all the services and how it interacts with, uh, the various community members, and how it, you know, one of the things in the resolution earlier today was especially talking about how, um, youth development, health, and education are crucial issues that need to be addressed to actually improve on the, uh, living standards of people here in Georgia, in Athens, Georgia. This, um, community center, this library, when it's closed, it's preventing these services from being rendered. And I, that people don't understand how, because it's on a private law, it's very complicated legally speaking. So it's why they're urging the mayor and commission and the government of Athens, uh, Clark County to take immediate action, and using all of its legal, including all its attorneys, uh, regulatory and infrastructural tools to restore consistent full access of water to this library. Um, because if a public institution, public library, again, this is Athens Clark County Library, lacks access to, uh, fundamental necessities like water, preventing it from being open many of the ti, for most, large amount of the time of the year, it is an emergency, and we need to act, and the government must treat it as such. And so, failing to act on this actually only deepens systemic disparities in our city and cannot be allowed to continue. On a separate note, um, over the past few weeks, there's been reports of ICE in Athens, Immigration Control Enforcement. What, I know that we have done a little bit on, um, helping our undocumented community here in Athens and providing, um, training and services on knowing your rights, but the government could be doing more on this issue. Um, what the government could do that has been recommended, um, by many people as well, is to really put out information on knowing your rights as an undocumented immigrant in terms of interacting with, um, interacting with ICE and Immigration Control. There has been some outreach by the Sheriff Department, Police Department on this. However, much more should be done. For example, any public-facing institution should be equipped to help someone who is undocumented for knowing the rights if this issue will occur, which, in the current political climate, looks like it's probably going to. Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. Good evening.
Hello. Lauren Fitzgerald at 505 Riverbend Parkway, and I'm also here to comment on protecting the rights of immigrants in Athens. Amid recent immigrant enforcement acts across the nation, I urge the Athens government to protect the rights of all residents regardless of immigration status, by ensuring that every person in Athens is informed of their legal rights regarding detention, questioning, and deportation. Additionally, public-facing institutions should be equipped with information and resources to assist individuals in need. We call on the mayor and commission to take proactive measures, uh, continue to take proactive measures, including public education campaigns, legal aid resources, and partnerships with advocacy organizations to safeguard due process and prevent rights violations in our city. Additionally, and on a related note, I would like to comment as well on the water crisis at the Pine Woods Library and Community Center. Pine Woods Library is an important resource for our community. It provides vital educational support, internet access, and community programs for combating inequality in Athens. Its ongoing water crisis directly undermines this mission and could force the public library to close, preventing residents from accessing these essential community resources. We urge the mayor and commission to take immediate action to restore full and reliable water access to the Pine Woods Library. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. I appreciate it. Is there any other member of the public who'd like to speak to any item not on tonight's agenda? Good evening.
Good evening. Quazan Payne, again. I live at 145 Walker Drive, uh, owner and operator of Payne Construction. I'd like to say what many of you have been thinking, and that is, I would like for us to look at bringing the control and the operations of SPOS and T-SPOS back under the privy of ACC personnel. We take in thirty-five million a month in tax, in tax revenue with that one percent. At six percent of that for the project management side of it, that's $2.1 million. We can fund enough positions to answer all of the questions that you didn't have answers to tonight. When Mr. Drake or Brad, when you have a question that pertains to them, they have the answers. They're sitting right here. There's no stuttering, no fumbling. They have the answers. My father was on the school board, and he was chairman of the property committee for years, and Commissioner Fisher, you hit the nail on the head. They built every school on time, on budget, recession or not recession. They didn't make excuses about it, and they did it with three in-house SPOS personnel. We need to look at bringing that back in so we can have answers to these questions right at our fingertips. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payne.
Y'all need one?
You can. We've got you.
I'll give you one.
Would anyone else like to speak to any item not on tonight's agenda? Before I move to, uh, managers' reports and commission reports, um, I, I do need to note for the record that, um, Brad Ricard and Patrick Davenport have been reappointed to the Northeast Georgia Regional Solid Waste Management Authority, so, uh, just need to note that for the record, uh, as requested by the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission. Um, anything from the manager tonight?
Yes, there are a couple things. I did want to make an announcement regarding the receipt of a grant from the ACCG Civic Affairs Foundation. It's a grant in the amount of $2,700 and change to our Communications Department to fund a video production intern. And so wanted to make you aware of that had happened. And then also, the second item is just an update or information to you regarding a operating transfer of $25,000 to the Capital Projects Department, um, that was done under, um, former interim manager Jones, um, for the purposes of T-SPOS referendum planning.
Anything from the attorney?
I just want to thank you for all the support and encouragement. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Drake.
One quick thing, Mayor. Um, with a new year, the two BACs associated with the Operational Analysis Office Audit Committee and PSCUP are both actively in the process of updating their annual work plans, so, uh, you'll see more on that, and you'll be updated to that once those are complete. Thank you.
Thank you, Auditor Haslam. I appreciate it. All right, we'll, uh, go ahead and get the commissioner input. We'll begin with Commissioner Davenport, and then Commissioner Thornton, who will adjourn us.
All right, well, Happy Black History Month, Happy Valentine's Day. Oh, um, I do want to thank, uh, Commissioner Taylor and how we did a, um, HRC, um, event, and that was lovely. That was really nice, and thank you.
Um, I, I just want to let everybody know that, um, my town hall has been rescheduled for February 11th. The nasty weather a couple weeks kind of interfered. Um, so please, anybody out there in District Two, please get the word out, February 11th at the AME Church. That's a Tuesday night. Um, and I, I kind of have a, some questions for staff. Um, I'm wondering if we could I'm wondering if we could get some kind of report on how upcoming funding, you know, as we enter budget season, how our budget is going to be impacted by federal funds being withdrawn or nullified or payments not being made. It looks like we will not be able to rely on federal funds from effectively any agencies, and this would impact our Transit Department, our Transportation Department, CBDG funds, HCD funds, you know, our police and fire departments. We rely on a lot of federal grants. So if we can get some kind of guidance on what to expect as we enter this new era of fascist oligarchy, which is where we are.
Commissioner Taylor?
Happy Black History Month. I just want to thank staff for all of the hard work, all of my colleagues for this discussion tonight. I feel like we are doing due justice to our constituents and the ones that put us in these seats. I would also like to shout out Judd, because Judd, you are so awesome, and we appreciate all that you do for us. You give us sound advice all the time, and so I want you to know how appreciated you are, at least, you know, I know by all of us. So yeah, I'm going to have a town hall, too. It's still in the works. I'm proud of myself. I'm moving my feet. So with that, everyone have a good night, and yeah.
I'm staying late. We're getting to where it's often hard to be here this late to have the open mic, so I'm going to make it short, though. I have this book I'm going to have in the clerk's office. It's The American, The New American College Town: Designing Effective Campus and Community Partnerships. I have this for a class I did for the International Town and Gown Association, and I'm going to have this in the clerk's office up by the mailboxes if you guys want to, anybody in the group wants to look at it. And, because it is important for us to have a good relationship with all the higher education and the school district, too. And then also, the passion that was here tonight talking to us, where are they when we need people to interview for the boards, authorities, and commissions? I'm sorry that they all left, because it would be great if they would step up and help us with all of them, advise and help us getting things done, and maybe get that complexion that we might be missing in the interviews. We need people, we need applicants to interview to get to where we're appointing people.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be hosting a town hall this Thursday, 6:00 p.m. at Chapel Ward United Methodist Church. It's off of Whitehead. I got flyers out for District 5, and if anybody's still out there listening in District 5, please attend. We've got some good stuff on the agenda that we've got to discuss. It'll be a Q and A, so I'm looking forward to that. The last time, we had close to 100 people, so hopefully people from District 5 will show up. And we get ready to go into budget season. The mayor and I met with, to our constitutional officers today, so we get ready to start that process. And I think we need to let the public know it's going to be a tight budget year. So we're going to have to make some tough decisions and really take a look at how we operate. So I'm looking forward to that and share it with my colleagues as we move forward. I do want to thank staff for what they do. Again, echo Commissioner Taylor. Judd, thank you for what you do and everything. And I do want to thank my colleagues for reaching out to me on behalf of my wife, and I appreciate that. She's recovering, and it's still going to be a little bit of a process, but she's doing well. But thank you all for reaching out and sending nice text messages and emails, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank the Westgate community for inviting me out to their neighborhood to meet with them, and I think there were about 61 people there, and it was a great time, and we had great discussion about some upcoming things in their neighborhood. I want to inform the community that I have three things on my page, my Facebook page and Instagram page, for residents. I have a leaf and limb survey. There is a proposed change, and I am just collecting feedback to, for, to Solid Waste Department. I am also hosting a survey for a town hall to determine the best, the best location and the best day of the week. And I have on that page a sign up for my newsletter. I also want to thank the Alpha Chapter of Iota Psi Omega for attending my swearing-in ceremony. A young lady named Tyler Benson, who saw me on campus last Saturday, and I chatted her up and found out she was in the master's program at UGA in public administration. It was like a win-win, and she was excited to just know about local government, so I invited her to attend one Tuesday. Also, I want to thank my family and friends for attending my swearing-in. Happy birthday to my pastor. And my phone is now working. Thank you so much, Anna Chimo, and internal support at the Central Services Department for residents, because I am committed to being accessible. My phone number is 762-402-3315. And I think I made up my mind today to officially file accommodations for the necessary needs that I need, so I won't ever get questioned about the way and the needs and how I learn from anyone behind the rail. Thank you.
Yes, I look forward to diving into the SPOS process and understanding that more and understanding the dollars that are left on projects and where we can possibly use those. I think that'll be helpful for all of us. Judd, we're praying for you every day, and we're here for you if you need anything. And thank you, thank you, staff, for everything you've done.
I want to thank the Homeless Coalition. They had a really wonderful breakfast summit on a lot of initiatives they're doing and following up on the money that we gave to work on various issues with the American Rescue Plan. And so I appreciate their doing that. They had a full house at that. I'd also like to ask the mayor and my colleagues to follow through, as some of our speakers tonight have asked us to, on some of our 100% resolution. I believe we have a new staff person in the Clean Energy Office, and I'm sure that person would very much appreciate the efforts that our community could add to his work in terms of educating the public and outreach. Clean energy is, we have a lot going on in this country right now with the weather and so forth. We also have, as one of our speakers, speakers said, the word "climate change" is once again being scrubbed out of document after document, webpage after webpage. And yet, the efforts that we are making with, we should be making to fight climate change are ones that not only help our environment, that help us be sustainable, and also to just sort of continue to deal with this. I just saw, you know, images the other day of the insurance rates and how they are increasing along the coast, and even here in this community, where, you know, our insurance rates, insurance rates are going up. So I just urge us to follow through on that, to give people options. I'm going to urge, I'm going to come back to urging the mayor on this. I know some of us here, although we seem good about adding another two boards tonight with commissioners, but are against any more boards and authorities, but I am going to be pushing for this one, because I think there's a lot of work that could be done from the public with volunteers that are enthusiastic on this. So I'm going to keep doing that. And there are also things like an EV policy for all of our rental units that are going up, so that we don't have to add things on, but so that people who rent have options to use e-vehicles and e-mobility devices. And finally, I'm having a town hall as well, next Tuesday night, now that our work session is during the day. Next Tuesday at 7:00 o'clock over at the Firehouse, we'll talk about the T-SPOS, leaf and limb, and traffic calming in neighborhoods, as neighbors like to know about. Anyway, I will pass it on here, and thanks all of you who came and spoke on various other subjects tonight.
I do want to thank everybody that came out tonight. I think, I think it speaks a lot about community involvement. And Judd, yeah, I love you too, Judd. But, and I want to, we're glad to have you on board, Bradley. But, I want to give a loud shout out to Andrew. Last week, you were holding it all down. I just was kind of embarrassed when I had to ask you about something. So I know sometimes I don't seem like I appreciate it, but you were on the spot last week. Now, maybe somebody else's stuff didn't get done, but mine got done, so thank you. Thank you for that. I am, I am concerned about the water situation in Pinewood. I thought that had been resolved. I'll be glad to talk to anybody, and we can compare notes. I kind of thought that was kind of taken care of, so you could, we can catch up on that, and I'll follow up. The other thing that bothers me a little bit, the gentleman that is on T-SPOS, when do you, when do you meet?
Mondays, 5:30 to 8:00.
I'm going to give you my card, because I need to talk to you. These are the kind of things that hinder participation, so I'm glad you brought it to our attendance. On the, you know, really, my intent on the resolution, the Black Lives Resolution, was to vote no, not to even discuss it. That was my intention, because I have already said I'm not doing no more resolution for nobody about nothing unless it had a purpose and dollars attached. I changed my mind, because I do believe that the intention of the resolution is what we need to embrace again. Voting no doesn't get us no closer to the concerns that we heard tonight. And I am personally going to follow up. I don't think I need your permission, I'm here, but I'm going to follow up, because 60 days is not that long. We need to have something in the pipeline. It's easy to say what you're going to say and don't do anything, so I'm going to do that. I will be reaching out to ADDM. I think there needs to be a conversation with whoever wants to be. So when we do put stuff down, we're all hearing the same thing. I think some of our problems are, or some of our challenges are, is communication. Certain folk talk to certain folk, and somebody get this piece of information, somebody, but this is too important, and we got to let the black community know they're just as important as any other, the black and brown community know they're just as important as any other. And I have not seen that. I'm going to just be upfront and honest. I have not seen it. So, again, thank everybody for coming out. I make a motion to meet and be adjourned.
Hold a favor? All opposed? All right, we are adjourned.